Okay. Good evening, I'll call this Fairfield Plant and Zoning Commission. Meeting on September tenth, twenty twenty four to order. Start with our minutes from our last meeting on August twenty seventh. Commissioner Harrison.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, they look good to me.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Levy seconds. Anything further? Comments, questions? Vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands. See seven hands, pass this unanimously. For the record, two Commissioner Seabird is sitting in for position. Item is three fifty Jennings Road, application of Gary. Gray so for alterations to convert to existing automobile repair base to retail convenience store in the neighborhood design district. Swent.
Mr. Chairman, Star Fuels is an existing gas station and automobile repair facility located at the intersection of Jennings Road and Black Rock Turnpike. In addition to the gas pump islands, there are presently three service bays on the front facade of the building. Excuse me, along with a small retail convenience store in the left hand portion. The applicant is seeking to expand the retail convenience store by reducing the area dedicated to automobile service. No expansion of the building footprint is proposed. This proposal includes eliminating the three service bay doors on the front of the building and providing a retail storefront. One service bay will be retained, however, the vehicle access will be shifted to the right hand side of the building rather than the front facade. To establish uniform retail appearance on that front. Access to the garage bay will be provided by a gate in the existing fenced vehicle storage enclosure. Existing roof, the building will be removed and reconfigured in line with presenting a more retail appearance with the new front facing gable. The ridge height will be increased by approximately seven feet to create an attic space for mechanical equipment and limited storage. Gas stations with vehicle service require ten parking spaces. The proposed approximately one thousand square feet of retail space requires five parking spaces for a total of fifteen. This proposal includes a new parking striping plan, providing sixteen spaces. Which are separate and distinct from the access to the gas pump violence. Should the application be approved? Implementation of the proposed striping should be a condition as well as continued maintenance. Prior conditions relating to tow vehicles and solid fencing enclosure of vehicles stored on the premises. That is all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. White. I have a motion on the item. Commissioner Corcello. Prove is there a second? Commissioner Levy, seconds.
Yes.
Commissioner Corcello.
I think it's a, it's an improvement over what's there now, I'm not even sure if the, much or. The repair base have been in use, but regardless, I think it's. I said, I think it's an improvement over what's there now. Well, I'm not sure if the repair base have been in use, but regardless, I think the retail use is an improvement that will come with some aesthetic.
Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, I agree, and it'll be an improvement at the intersection of Jennings.
Yeah, I had a question. Just I notice it's like a really bad intersection over there, I guess, how much do they expect to expand their business by having this new model without the repair?
Hard to say, I don't know that there's any quantification of that, it is a, it's kind of a odd intersection and it's a four way intersection that's not. Along at right angles, it is this, it is this traffic controlled signal intersection. But to answer your question, we don't have any data on what the respective traffic increase might be.
And then, and one more, are they removing any trees or landscaping?
No, the site is completely, from the building forward, the site is completely paved presently.
As with our regulations.
It does, I mean, it's been there a long time. It's an active, this operator is an active towing contractor. So they have a lot of, they need some room to maneuver those tow vehicles and flatbeds with the fairly sizable fenced enclosure for the side and to the rear of the building. So it's technically making by eliminating, reducing the number of car bases actually making the use more conformal to the regulations.
Commissioner Brown.
So I. It's very faded on the computer, I don't know if it's just my computer. I couldn't understand, they were saying, I can't understand where people are, where is the? Tell establishment and where are, are they taking two of the garage? Those are like garages, right? And turning them into a retail store? That would be to the right, or is that where you go in to pay for your gas?
Emily is going to pull up.
Because I can't really try to envision and. One thing he said in the narrative was. Won't have to walk in front of gas pumps to go from somewhere to somewhere.
Right, so if you go, so the existing floor plan is on the upper right. You can see the small box on the left of that upper right image is the existing retail space. Door that enters, enters there, the three bays are to the right of that. Upper right image.
I'm looking at the.
The existing is the upper right, you see three bays and then a smaller. Retail presence in the lower left of that upper right. Left hand larger image, and the three bay doors get taken off the front. With the bay now showing where that car is parked.
Where are the three bay doors to the right?
Only a single bay to remain.
This is the proposed, not the existing.
The three bays presently are in the bottom right, you see them, one, two, three. Those go away, you can see a fairly dark vertical line about two thirds of the way across the building on the left. Line where Emily has her cursor going up and down, if you look at the screen.
Is that a real view or is that a cross section?
Look at the, Emily, if you do that again, where Emily's cursor is going up and down. Turning to the left of that will be retail convenience store. The right is the single bay. And the door that you were talking about is on the left hand facade. The new entry door just below the bathroom. So customers that park on the left hand side of the building can enter and exit through that store.
Are they taking off part of the building or are they just converting the left hand two bays into a larger store than what is there now?
Yes.
And then, will people be able to park on the right, there's a lot of cars parked here from the aerial picture, I'm looking at those, a lot of those. I guess, they're not going to do as much.
They, they will have some cars, they can have up to five vehicles outside of their fenced enclosure that are cars. Repair cars, everything else will be parking for the retail use.
This arrow doesn't show the fenced enclosure, but okay, so people going in and out to get a sandwich or whatever from the convenience store, will they be coming off Jennings or off of Black?
Well, they can come off of both, if you go to the, you go to the survey and line up, sorry.
It's very confusing.
Men on that, you can't, there's some parking to the left and there's some parking to the right. But there's going to be a door. Where the existing door is, and then there's going to be a new door on the left hand side of the building.
So people could park on either side and they expect, obviously, to expand the business, I assume.
Well, again, there's going to be some parking for staff and for some of the repair cars, I would presume. On the right hand side of the building, they need to keep the front open for access for, for drive through for the pump, the pump. Gas station pump canopy is in the front, you can see that big square there. So you can enter either from Black Rock Turnpike or Jennings.
That square. Concrete, what is that, is that?
Concrete pad is just the tank field, those are the covers. Correct.
They didn't do any, I mean. It does generate a lot of traffic now just for getting gas, but not for repairs probably, right?
Well, I don't know how active the repair is, there's a fair number, like I said, there's a very active towing. Business, so there's a lot of number of tow trucks that come and go out of here and then at the end of the day, they're all behind the fenced enclosure.
Do you anticipate more traffic in and out being generated? Because that is a very bizarre intersection because of C V S across the road and the liquor store of. Sorry.
Mr. White, though, is traffic, I mean, we're in zoning compliance, is there traffic considerations in this?
Well, it's, it's a permitted use, so it's, my experience is more often than not, if you're going there to get gas and you want to steal yourself of the convenience store. You'll, you'll pump gas and then run in and buy whatever you're going to get, you're not generally going to move your car from the gas pump to the parking space to do that. If you're just running around the corner to get a gallon of milk or something, you could do that, but if it's not convenient to do so, then you're likely not going to do that. So I, I can't quantify that, it's not.
And the parking spaces are, how many parking spaces are they?
Sixteen, the required fifteen.
Okay, so they have that.
Harrison.
Yeah, are they going to be adjusting their hours just due to the, the new business model that they have?
I don't know whether they are or they're not, but we don't regulate their hours of operation.
Yeah, I was just curious, okay, fair enough. And are there neighbors about in the back?
There are neighbors to the, the, yes, there are neighbors, residential neighbors pretty much surrounding this property. Side into the rear, there's a solid fence. You see the fence line, it runs. It's a solid fence. Emily is all the way around that, that has been. Within the last couple of years, this site has been substantially cleaned up. We used to have complaints about the number of vehicles that are stored there because of the nature of the towing business. They've installed newer, effective screening, have cleaned up the area in the back. And so that fence enclosure is much more. Solid than it has ever been, and so we haven't had any kind of complaints since they.
I'm sorry, I know it's just compliance, but I have one more question, are there any concerns with any additional food waste compactors being there because it's now going to be more of a?
They have an existing dumpster enclosure, which is something that that's going to be, there's not going to be a lot of on premise consumption.
Yeah, fair enough. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
What's the so vote? I'm just, I'm sorry, I was about to ask a quick question, so just to clarify. Already here. Able to review for, I'm sorry, for traffic and. We're not able to review for traffic issues, is that not within our purpose?
If this were an expansion of the building or establishment of a, of a new use, I mean, there is a small retail component there now, they're enlarging that footprint. But for a permitted use without a change, your size, it's generally not required.
Yeah, so I, I concur with some of the other observations which are anecdotal that this is a, and I don't know if there's been a, a study of the frequency of traffic incidents, but this is a. High incident corner, and if we could. Request or revise, not as a condition, not make it a condition to. Somehow. Improve the, the, the traffic flow through there because there are. Anecdotally frequent accidents there witnessed. I know it's a dangerous intersection, just want to make sure we're not. Increasing the, the danger of that intersection.
So I'm not really sure what you're asking, sorry.
It's not, can, can we request, is there a way to not make it a condition, but make a request that the applicant?
Request for approval? Am I saying that right?
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're asking, I mean, it's a state. Black Rock, it's a state road, so we don't have a lot of local authority over that, that's a state.
So it's, it's out of our.
Were there sidewalks, sorry to cut you off.
It's, that's out of our purview then?
I would say yes.
Thank you.
Could you have? It going one way and one way out like we're doing in some of the other applications, just to prevent the confusion, it's, I've almost had accidents in that area.
Oh, it's not ideal without a doubt, but it is, the pumps are. Way, there's a curb, there's a curb cuts on both Jennings and Black Rock Turnpike. There's a partial sidewalk, not the.
Can people drive on the property on the outside of the pumps from one side to the other? Or?
Yes.
So that's.
You said our.
I'm trying to figure out.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we're seeing our administrative capacity to determine whether this application meets our regulations. Objective regulations, not the special permits that were, were soft standards that we have, so. I don't, it being a state highway to begin with and. Normally do and what is expected of us, I, you know, I don't see any. Infringements of our regulations, and I think that kind of leads to, should be the approval of this application.
And safety is a consideration, right?
I know, I think if we meet the regulate, he meets the regulations as far as, you know, the, the objective standards that are there, setbacks and use and all, everything that's there. This is an existing business and they're seeking an administrative review of what we. Meet the regulations. Objective regulations and at the soft standard that we'll see with traffic and safety, that's up to somewhat of a subjective review. So I think we are somewhat bound to. This as it meets the regulations.
I think we have some discretion even. Compliance.
Back and forth, except what I needed to say, Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, no, I appreciate what you, the insights that you just provided, just through you to Commissioner Randolph, I just want to clarify what, what you were saying, if you don't mind, because you don't want, you don't want this area to be worse, you want this to be.
Well, I think that's the intention, but it, it sounds like the clarification was it's a state road, it's not a change in use, so it's outside of our. To make any changes.
Well, that was your initial intent, though, is not to make it worse, really.
Yeah, I think that's everybody's intention, which is fine, again, existing use. Sticking within the regulations, similar use, similar foot. You know, kind of a lot of things. The regulations, so.
No, I think we just want to be explicit that we're not making this area worse by granting, we realize it's, you know, our hands are tied. Forget that, but I think we just want to be explicit to want this area worse.
I have a, I have a question about.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Okay, so we did another gas station on the other end of Black Rock Turnpike several, a couple of years, two years ago or so. They promised a whole lot of green, greenery, improved landscaping, it, it looks very barren, is that something, was that a similar compliance application?
No, that was a special permit application because it was a substantial addition to that building.
Okay.
So they, that was a special permit that required a different level of, they would completely redid the whole site.
Okay, I was disappointed because when I drive by there, I don't see any landscaping, it's not green at all. Is, are we allowed to add any kind of landscaping requirements on something like this, we are trying to add trees wherever we can.
Well, I don't know where you would do that.
I mean, they're getting rid of cars, right, all those cars that I see here.
Well, there's still going to be a fenced enclosure that's going to have some cars, there's cars there, there's, there's fewer than there are in that area, but they still, and that's where access to that bay door is going to be. So everything from the building forward is, is completely the area for vehicular circulation through the pumps in, in, in and out.
And from the building backwards is a lot of, I do see some, we own the property up to the, up to the houses, right?
Yes, on the other side of that fenced enclosure is all, is all landscape, there's trees along the residential property line. And it's a slope, this, this building sits up and then it slopes down towards, towards the back, so there's a. Rip rap slope and then grass at the bottom, there's actually a garden back there and then some trees along the residential property line.
Okay, I don't consider it safe, but it's not really a change of use, but they, they could use some better signage and some better landscaping.
And just to clarify, is there, there are, there are going to be two entrances on the left hand side, is that why, right?
There is. It's hard to see from this. There's an existing curb cut on Jennings. And two existing curb cuts on Black Rock Turnpike, one. Closer to where the proposed parking bays are, and the other that's closer to where the pumps are. It's hard to, it's not delineated on that survey very well, you can see the curb cut on Jennings. But they didn't delineate it very well on Black Rock, it's kind of asphalt, there's two curves, if you can see this. I've got it color coded here, the green are the two existing. Driveway curb cuts, in between that is a small section of curb, catch basin out in the street. And then, yellow line is the existing concrete curb and then. There's two, I'm sorry, there's two curb cuts on Jennings Road that are shown in orange.
What's the so vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands. Pass this unanimously. We're on to our public hearing. With the application, M six one Hillside Road, special exception, application of the Nest Greenfield Hill, Inc. pertaining to addition. Existing building to establish a daycare use in the neighborhood design district, continued from August thirteenth and twenty seventh. We had ended public comments at that point, and we are still in the middle of the applicant's rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, again, my name is John Fallon, I am here representing the applicant. The principals of the applicant, Lee and Amy Small, who you've heard from during the course of this presentation. Are here as well, and as I said two weeks ago, I thank you on their behalf for your attention and consideration of this application. I recognize you have other items on your agenda and I'll endeavor to keep my. Focused, although obviously I have a fair amount to cover. Just by way of background, in the last application or excuse me, the last hearing. You heard from Lee Small, he talked about the tuition, to put that in context. He emphasized from his personal experience, the need. Talked about the Goddard School and its comparison of a hundred and seventy students and thirty one spaces. He talked extensively at the time about the enforcement of the drop off requirements, which we have submitted to you as the manner in which we will operate this facility. He talked to you about anecdotal information concerning the interest from Fairfield and Greenfield Hill residents. He, he talked and so did our consultants about the safety and functionality of the play area, we submitted photos to that. And we also talked about how special events at schools would be handled. Putting that in some further context, we only have three to four special events a year. And we've stated for this record and we are committed to you to say that we will ensure that no event will be held on, at the school. That cannot accommodate all of the participants in the parking lot at that time. How we will do that, as, as Lee explained and Amy as well, is if in fact we have something like a parent teacher night. We'll break that up to three or four different sessions so that we'll make sure that the parking lot can accommodate those coming, if we have a larger event. A graduation, a field day, something like that, we'll take it off site, at a park or make other arrangements, so that's already part of the record. You also heard at the last proceedings from Kurt Loenstein and Bill Kenny. They talked about the, how the runoff from the playground is being controlled and won't be directed at the new property. They spoke extensively about the slope and cliff area and, and put it, I think, in probable, proper context, as did the photographs. Of that we have a level playing area that is exceedingly safe. In addition to that, we talked about safety in the play area, and we made a commitment to you that we would build a stone wall. Around the perimeter of that play area so that the play area would be safe and effectively barrier.
Fine, you'd said, I think, a stone wall or even what was the other one?
Guardrails, I think we prefer to do a stone wall. I think it's aesthetically more pleasing.
Would that be something, a condition of approval?
Yes.
With conditions of approval for, we talked about staggering the. Kids coming in with their parents coming in, drop offs would be a condition of approval.
Yes, you have in your record, the actual schedule that we provided, the fifteen minute increments and, and, and another thing that. Mr. Small testified to extensively, extensively, specifically to, extensively was how that could be covered and is, would be covered in the individual contracts. With any of our clients.
Staggering drop off, you'd be okay with a condition? You, your client, obviously.
Absolutely.
And. You just mentioned the, not having the entire school there, could that be?
Yeah, I think, well, the, the condition should read that there'll be no events held at the school. For which the participants cannot be totally accommodated onsite parking. The intention of this condition being that there will be no events at the school where there'll be the need to try to, to park off the site.
Thank you.
About the stone wall? Okay, so a stone wall looks prettier, but they're not very tall, I have actually seen cars go over stone walls and. Is there any way of preventing that, because that happens?
Yeah, no, I, 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 I understand what you're saying, I think that same can happen with a guardrail, I mean, no, no barrier is foolproof. We think a stone wall, probably measuring something in the neighborhood of thirty to thirty six inches would be.
I would leave it up to.
Three feet?
Would be, is that curb? Yeah. Three feet, we, we think that would be very effective in stopping. The, the, any impediment, I would also point out that as I did, the, the location of this play area is not unique, if you look at the location of play areas as set at other schools like the Goddard School and Bright Beginnings. They have similarly located play areas and they have barrier protection and, and we're doing the same thing. We also talked about sidewalks, we would ask you to consider not establishing a sidewalk to nowhere. There's really no real connection to the residential neighborhood. And, and we do feel it might invite even a false sense of security with regard to pedestrians, but of course, that becomes ultimately your. Consideration, we talked about snow removal, we provided you with a snow removal plan. Obviously, we're going to follow the public schools in terms of snow removal, snow closures, but we did give you a plan that shows how we would stack snow if necessary. We talked about Branford, it's really an apples and oranges situation, you have a hundred and sixty one students plus twenty staff at Branford. That's a hundred and eighty one and thirty five parking spaces on that site. And there is no drop off schedule there, as there would be here, should you approve this application with the condition that we discussed. We went through the Simco report, I won't belabor that again, I'll simply say that the turning radius worked even at the beginning, but we have adjusted that. And that is even more. Conforming now, if you will, and we also reviewed Mr. Monteleone's findings with regard to the sufficiency of, of the parking. His statements, which I won't repeat, but you will look at before, you deliberate, I'm sure, were highly equivocal, they said the twenty eight spaces may not be enough. He didn't include the handicap spaces on the presumption that they wouldn't use, he established a fifteen minute. Drop off when actually we're talking seven or eight minutes. He just said he doubts, he not sure that the staggered plan will work, well, we've given you testimony that it will be enforced contractually. And the seven spaces to the rear, he discounted, but as was testified to, they will be utilized by staff.
Question for Commissioner Harrison.
Yes, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
That, that's okay, I actually had three questions during the last hearing, I, I asked the traffic consultant about that. They were related to the I T data. Hopefully you guys have the answers, how many of the banks in the study were located in New England? How many of the banks in the study were provided, were providing private bank services? And how many banks in the study were located in a, in a residential community? Do we have that data?
We do not.
Is that able to get that?
I could get that to staff, so you'll have it for your deliberations.
I, I just, you know, I think we probably talked about this before, I struggle with some of the I T. Data because I find it very generic, it's from around the country, it's not specific to Fairfield, but it's the internet we have.
I will make sure that Mr. Went has that data. Okay, so turning to things that we haven't covered, and I have to start with my colleague, Mr. Green. And kind of quickly, I hope, go through some of his comments with regard to the parking regulations, and I have some handouts that are relevant to that. First of all, he started off by referencing section seven one fifty nine B and somehow. Quoted that to code reviews, but if you look at seven one fifty nine B, that's the statute that empowers you to consider pre-application reviews, which you do have occasionally. And in the context of that statute, it says those are non-binding. But that has nothing to do with code enforcement meetings, and the code enforcement meetings in all cases, and in this case, are evidence of compliance. With regulations or other factors such as building or fire codes, which you certainly can consider. He also then referenced in his sort of, oh my god fashion. That there were a few spaces that were non-conforming to the parking standards normally implied by nine by eighteen. Because we had a few spaces that were nine by sixteen. However, he failed to include reference in that remark. I'll just pass these down in the interest of time to section twenty eight point eleven point two point nine. And twenty eight point eleven, two point ten, which I just passed down to you, which clearly authorized. The reduction to a standard of nine by sixteen in certain circumstances. And even has an appendix drawing, which I didn't give you. That basically shows how this would be done. Also, I think if you look at the code enforcement minutes, that whole matter of these few spaces, which were shortened only to save some very mature trees. Was discussed at code. And I'll leave it to Mr. Went during your work session to confirm that those spaces are totally appropriate. And the intention of which is to save those trees and they are provided for in the regulations. It was testimony by Mr. Green and Attorney Russo with regard to the implications of section twelve point ten point three point two. But, you know, when you look at that, and I have that section here somewhere.
Can you go back to code review because I have a question?
Sure, go ahead. Yep.
Go ahead. Code review is also not binding, not required, not, it's a voluntary undertaking. Sort of not a pre-application view because we don't do code review.
Correct.
At the commission.
Correct.
But it's an opportunity, if somebody wants to, to go around different departments and see what their preliminary thoughts are, so they can improve the project. My understanding is that's done before an application is even filed with zoning to try to buckle up a little, make the department happy. I don't think it goes to commissions.
No, I think what it does go to though is it's, it's a fair evidence of whether or not there is compliance in the application that actually comes before you. Relative to standards involving building code, fire code, things of that nature.
Except sometimes that is not even the current application, it could be like a prior version of it, you know, the, the plans could be different from.
Yes. I, I don't disagree.
Always know.
I, I'm just making the point that section seven, one fifty nine B is cited to you, doesn't apply to code enforcement meetings, it applies to pre-application.
Okay.
Okay, then there is the, and I'll pass these down as well. There was the comment made with, with regard to section ten, twelve point ten point three point two. That basically says off street parking shall occur behind or on the side of the structures. Allowing buildings to front partially or wholly on the sidewalk, okay? Two, three, three points in that regard. If you look back at the previous page, page sixty one and the handout I just gave you. Up in the preamble, section twelve point ten of this section. It says land buildings and other structures may be constructed. May be constructed. So this section in its essence applies to new construction. Obviously, this is a new bill, this is an existing building. It's existed here for many, many years. And in fact, what we're doing is reducing whatever non-conformity to this section currently exists. Because currently there are seven spaces that are fronting the building, that will be reduced to two. Then Mr. Green talked to you about setbacks. I'm not going to take a whole lot of time on this. Because even if I accepted Mr. Green's tortured definition or interpretation of the regulations. As I will demonstrate to you in a minute, we'd comply anyway. And I will say this to you, don't take my word for it. Don't take Mr. Green's word for it. When you're in your work session, look to your staff. Because what I did before I came to you tonight is I did sit down with Mr. Went. And I said, here's my understanding of the regulation. And I am not going to speak for Mr. Went tonight, but I'll leave it to him to speak to you to this issue when you're in work session. But I will say that his, Mr. Green's suggested interpretation of the regulations has never been adopted or applied before. I.e. that we should measure setback compliance, not from property lines, but from the adjacent residence district boundary. Note that the existing building that we're talking about here, by that standard, would be non-conform, non-conforming to this interpretive standard. And you'll note that there were no variances that were ever required for the construction of that particular building. Also, if you adopted Mr. Green's interpretation, you better give notice to a lot of property owners in the design, neighborhood design business system. Because you'd be rendering many of those non-conforming. However, as I said at the outset. All that may not be relevant. Because even if I accepted this tortured definition, we comply. And let me explain to you how that's true, okay? I'm going to give you section five point two point four point one. Okay? That apply. In the residential zone. In that particular section and in this particular zone, the triple A zone. Stairways and other such open fire escapes, open stairways, et cetera. Are allowed to protrude into the setback by up to five feet, okay? Now, let's talk first about Hill Farm Road. The issue in Hill Farm Road is apparently, according to Mr. Green, the unenclosed stairway that's shown on the plans. Were adjacent to the residential district triple A. If I accepted Mr. Green's theory that the street setback should be applied based upon the adjacent residential zone. The setback is sixty feet. But I get the exemption of five feet. For sec, but under section five point two point four point one. So the effect of setback, if I accepted Mr. Green's argument, would be fifty five feet. If I measure the setback to those stairs from the center line of Hill Farm Road, it's sixty one feet. If I measure it from the center line of the pavement, because I was a little unsure where Mr. Green was with that. I'd still be fifty seven feet. Either way, I comply. Now, the addition itself is eighty five feet from the property line. You can scale it. And therefore, it would comply, it would comply again, even if you adopted Mr. Green's interpretation. Hillside Road. The adjacent residence district is double A. That, that leads to a street setback of fifty feet. When you look at our site plan, we're sixty feet, the building is sixty feet from there. So this whole shell game about setbacks. Has no validity. First of all, it's not the interpretation that's been applied for many, many decades. His interpretation would render many, many properties, including this one, non-conforming. And third, it doesn't matter because even if you accepted his standard, we comply. Similarly, there was testimony by Mr. Green and Russo with regard to section twenty five point seven point six. I'll pass down, I think this was previously handed out. But just so you have it handy, couple of points there. First of all, the structures that are referenced in that particular section. Uh, excuse me, in our plans, and again, confirm this with staff or not. Are not permanent structures, okay? Therefore, the setback regulations do not apply. If you look at section twenty seven, twenty five point seven point six. It says that the area in question shall be quote suitably landscaped. That doesn't preclude the placing of items like our mud kitchen and things like that in those areas. What you want to make sure of, and you can address again if you think it's not, is whether or not the area is suitably landscaped. That's all it is. Now, if the staff were to feel that any of the elements, the playground elements that you have, have pictures of, are in fact structures. And if any of those are within setbacks, then obviously you'd establish a condition of approval. That they have to be moved, relocated, so they're in conformance with the setback. So that's a non-issue two. Let's get back to what the, the most serious focus and consideration here has been, and I think should be. And that's traffic. We stand by our expert testimony regarding traffic. We've reviewed the videos that were submitted during the course of the last session. And we know you probably have too, or will, or will again. I think when you do, you'll notice that any of the que, the queues, cleans, the backups that are shown in those are from Bronson Road. And at no time in any of those videos are our exits or exits driveways blocked or obstructed. That's not me, that's based upon the videos that were submitted by opponents to you. The expert that was called by the opponents, Mr. Monteleone. Talked about and testified about parking. And I've already addressed that. And we've already talked about parking, his assumptions, his findings, his equivocal, well, it may not work, it could work, okay? But he didn't talk about traffic. The only expert testimony that you have in this record on traffic. Is from Mr. Del Rio. Their expert didn't dispute our traffic generation findings. He rendered a three or four page report on parking, onsite parking. Their expert didn't even visit the site. And it's clear, as Mr. Del Rio said, that we're not comparing this site from a traffic perspective to the good old bank. We think that bank was quite busy. I saw it over many years, living up there for thirty some years, it wasn't, it was busy. But what relevant from a traffic standpoint is not what that bank was doing, especially maybe in its last years of operation. But what a bank based upon I T E situations would be expected to do at that location. And we will get that information to Commissioner Harrison. But at the end of the day, if you're looking at expert testimony, it only comes from Mr. Del Rio. And there was no evidence supplied by any other expert, even though an expert testified in these proceedings. He limited himself to considerations with regard to parking. And I will say something else. And I said it at the beginning. If this used, and I'll sum up further on traffic in a second. But if this use cannot go there, okay? This use where we have less traffic impact and volume, none on the evenings, none on weekends. What can go there? What do I tell this property owner? Forget these nice people who want to come and make a contribution to Fairfield that's much needed. And they've spent a lot of money to get to this point, but that doesn't matter. But what do we tell the property owner? Okay? Because at the end of the day, this is a permitted use in the zone. But so are restaurants, medical offices, retail facilities, all those are permitted in your zone. And if this doesn't work, in your opinion. With the volumes that we have, which is less, the traffic impact from the bank. Was five hundred and forty two vehicle trips during the peaks. Our is three oh four, a forty three percent reduction. Our hourly volumes are generally therefore less than the bank. We're closed on weekends and we close the facility at six o'clock. So if this is denied, because this intersection is in the eyes of the neighbors, with all due respect, problematic. What can go there? I don't know. And that is in the context of the commitments we've made. And can be imposed as a condition of approval to the drop off and pickup schedule. And all in the context of the record, which basically leaves the expert testimony with Mr. Del Rio.
Attorney Fallon?
Yes.
The expert testimony, imagine you're tying that into the, the case that I'm neglecting to remember.
I'm going to it.
I went to it next, so go through that and then I have a question for you.
Okay, so look, as I've, these cases, which can be difficult cases, and again, the volunteer service that you provide the community without being. Solicitous is really amazing, but because these are not easy cases. But at the end of the day, two things guide you, the law and the facts. The law is something that I think is important to address. I submitted weeks ago as part of the presentation of, because I wanted it in the record, the McLaughlin case. And Mr. Green referenced McLaughlin as well because I had submitted it. Now, what I'm giving you here is the full McLaughlin case. And I've taken the liberty of numbering the pages on the bottom right hand corner. Just so when I refer to pages, you'll know where I'm looking. And I'm not going to read you the case, and I know you will or have. But the special permit case involving a special permit application to establish a crematory in Bethel. And I just want to share with you some of the points that were made by the court. It's a Supreme Court case decided in April of twenty twenty two. And the first one I'd like to share is if you go to page five, my numbered page five. They state the appellate court holding in Saint Joseph, which was another case, thus permits the zoning commission to deny an application for a special permit. Based upon generalized considerations. But at the same time, requires specific evidence that relates directly to the site under consideration. So yes, you can have your general standards, as you do in section twenty five. But this court is making clear that those general standards can only be the basis of denial. When there is specific evidence in the record that relates directly to the site under consideration. If you look on the other side of page five, put differently. Although the considerations relevant to review of a special permit application can be general. The evidence bearing on those considerations cannot be. And I bracketed out these quotes that I'm giving you.
And to be clear, you have brackets on these things.
That's right, so you know where I'm looking. From page five to page six. In terms of looking at this particular case, the court says unless judicial review reveals. Substantial evidence to support such a particularized finding. Then non-particularized general objections will be insufficient, will be an insufficient basis to uphold. A zoning commission's denial of a special permit application. Unless it reveals substantial evidence to support such a particularized finding. Then non-particularized general objections will be insufficient. Going on and getting to the end at the bottom of page nine, going over to page ten. And in the same vein, the court said, as we have discussed, general concerns. Speculation and mere worry without more do not qualify as substantial evidence. Public testimony is not to be considered substantial evidence. When it is not supported by anything other than speculation and conjecture. On the part of those objecting to a party's proposed activities.
That seems a good place for me to ask my question. The neighbor, the op, the neighbors and oppositional during public comment who have generally been opposing. I believe have been less using conjecture and speculation as opposed to eyewitness testimony. What they've seen, what, you know, we have, we have videos and I'll be, and I think I have to double check the range and what the, what the. Streets that they're showing the videos on. Many have been, I think, not saying, I think this is, you know, they're direct neighbors, they're showing what currently is existing.
Bad intersection.
Bad intersection.
Right.
And that their, I think their testimony can be summed up. their testimony can be summed up by saying it is overly congested now, and any additions is going to be dropped, dropped too much, so to speak.
And my answer to that would be twofold. Number one, I won't read it again, but if you go back to the beginning of McLaughlin, they talk about general standards being appropriate to consider in determining a special permit application, but only when there is evidence, particularized evidence with regard to the site in question. The taking of videos at rush hour showing that this intersection can be busy is not particularized evidence that this particular site or this particular use is, is, is not fulfilling the standard. And it does rise to where I left off in my quotes, to general, it's a general concern. They have general concerns about the intersection. It's speculation as to whether or not that situation that they have general concerns about will be exacerbated by this use or not, and they're worried about it. But again, general concerns, speculation, and mere worry without more do not qualify as substantial evidence. Public testimony is not to be considered substantial evidence when it's not supported by anything other than speculation and conjecture on the part of those objecting to the party's proposed activities. This is not, this intersection is not what's on trial. The question is, does this use, which you permit in the zone, have a right to be established here? Yes.
Hold on, I'm sorry, not done yet, though. You do have a traffic consideration for the site.
You do.
And they're talking about the intersection that abuts directly the site. Now, put the videos aside about, put that aside. I mean, certainly here the neighbor's testimony about this intersection, and that it is too congested, in their opinion, too, or their testimony, whatever it is, too congested for this site, that they're still going to have to go through the intersection. The intersection backs up beyond, at least on, which one is the one that goes east to west? Hill Farms?
Yep.
Hillside, which one is it?
Oh.
Far.
Far.
That goes north, south, right?
Right.
Hillside goes north, south, thank you. And it goes not too far, and that there's additional, you know, obstructions there.
Right.
And that in your mind is not particularized sufficiently according to this case.
Especially when if traffic is consideration and the application of your section twenty-five standards for traffic. The only expert testimony in the record with regard to traffic indicates that there's going to be less traffic impact associated with this use than not only the bank use that was there, but other prospective uses that could be there.
But he didn't go so far as to say that the trip generation for this site that the roads can handle. He didn't do the full traffic analysis, A, B, C, and all that kind of stuff.
He only, he gave you the figures that, you know, we've supplied you, but that's correct, but that, that you're, the, the problem that you have, or not the problem you have, because you're going to, it's not your problem, you're going to make a decision here. But the problem is that under McLaughlin, the facts aren't such that what you've received to negate the approval here meet the standard that McLaughlin proposes. They're traffic, they brought a, they brought a traffic engineer in here, and that traffic engineer did not.
I didn't say anything about traffic, so I mean.
He didn't say.
Well, listen, I'm not gonna, I don't think I need to necessarily, though, maybe I can infer, and I make a negative inference on that. I don't know if I can or can't. I'll think about that later. But in your mind, there, the testimony provided by the neighbors taken in the best light for the neighbors, does not meet.
It does not. Respectfully, it does not. And, and the reason it doesn't, if you want to turn to the next page, and again, this is not meant to be but I think it's an important point that needs to be made here.
No, this has always been something that this commission, I imagine most commissions are, struggle with.
If, if you look at. If you look at this on page eleven in my material, the court characterizes the opposition testimony that it heard in this case to the old famous not in my backyard, NIMBY, okay? And it goes on up above on that page to say that, and not just any evidence, evidence that is substantial. Such generalized not in my backyard opposition does not as a matter of law constitute substantial evidence on which to deny a proposed, in this case, wireless communication facility. And if you look on page eleven, they cite page, they cite footnote fifteen, and footnote fifteen is all the way to the back of the decision on my numbered page six, page sixteen, excuse me, and it says, "NIMBY conflicts arise from projects that typically generate widely dispersed benefits while imposing concentrated costs such as homeless shelters, prisons, airports, sports museums, and, and disposal sites. Despite the social desirability of such projects, they often provoke intense local resistance that harness the political process to block construction of the proposed facility." I think that's pertinent here. That's the Supreme Court talking in the context of a special permit application about a use you permit in your zone, a use that is, has demonstrated need in this community. And okay, we've got concerns. I respect those concerns that at times of the day, this intersection of Hillside and Hill Farms Road can be busy. I accept that. I know that. I go through that intersection. But there isn't testimony, particularized testimony and evidence that would lead to the conclusion that the permitting of this use at this site, which you permit under your regulations, subject to a special permit review, you have substantial evidence that it's going to cause an exacerbation of any such problem.
I remember a law for special permits where the mission bringing in its, you know, using its own knowledge of the road, can use its own knowledge of the roads.
Correct.
Does that affect in any way by McLaughlin's decision?
I, I think it has to be a particularized, you're entitled to use your own knowledge. But that knowledge in the context of McLaughlin has to be knowledge that's particularized with regard to the specific proposal and the specific site. So can you say, yeah, I go through Hillside, Hill Farm on occasion, and it's busy? Sure, you have that right, but the question is, does that rise to the level?
Well, the next step, I guess, in your mind is, how does this site affect the roads as, even as they are?
Correct.
And I'm certainly not a traffic expert, and I don't think, as you said, I don't think there's traffic expert has been provided by the opposition. Your point is that next step as to how it affects the roads is an expert opinion.
And the expert testimony that you do have in the record and the facts that you have in the record is that the volume associated with the bank was five hundred and forty-two trips. This use will be three hundred and four, a forty-three percent reduction, and.
I, I get your, I get your point with the, what a traditional, well, what a generic bank will do under the I T. I, I get that. I mean, it's hard, it's a hard, I know where you're coming from, I get it. The problem is here, we have a vacant use, so it's hard to kind of ignore that as well, but your point about that is well, is well taken.
Right.
With your Harrison and Brock.
Yeah, I just want to understand, if I'm hearing you correctly, are you saying that we cannot, we can only listen to experts on a certain issue?
No.
That seems to negate the whole public here.
No, 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 I, I am not. I, I, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is that the, the standard is that you can deny the application provided you have specific exit evidence related directly to the site under consideration that is relevant. So sure, you can, you're not limited to expert testimony, but the, the question here is not whether this intersection is busy. The question here is whether or not this use, which you permit under your regulations, is going to have such an impact, such an exacerbation of what you may be concerned about as to allow it to be denied. And in this case, what McLaughlin cautions you is, don't speculate. You need particularized substantial evidence to justify if you're going to make such a finding. And that gets back to the point I made before. What, what, what are you, what's going to happen next? What, you know, are we going to end up with an inverse condemnation suit from some property owner? I don't represent the property owner. But, you know, well, gee, what can we do with this property? Because my property is now not developable because of your concerns about Hillside and Hill Farm. And, you know, I know Commissioner Randolph, you know, talked about, you know, the police commissioner. I don't know, you know, what they could or should or would do, but that should not be held hostage, this, this application and this property shouldn't be held hostage.
No, I agree. I don't think we can make a decision based on what another agency should do or not do, so I agree.
So so given that we don't have, we can consider lay testimony.
Sure.
Also, facts that were presented. So we have a parking schedule here in a ninety-minute period from seven-thirty till nine. We have seventy-two, up to seventy-two enrolled students and fifteen staff will be arriving. Allegedly, and. I don't see any way you will really enforce that. No one's going to send someone away.
Well, there is, yes, we will. No, that's not true. The, the testimony is that every single person who comes here will sign a contract. And the contract will be enforced as contracts are, and they will be under a contractual duty to deliver the children in that appointed window, and they, they will do that. The other thing, not to cut you off, but if, if you want to talk about, I, my, the irony here is my, maybe my best evidence that our plan works is not so much from Mr. Del Rio, which is good, but I'll, I'll buy into, to Mr. Manoleon's testimony, because he cites in his thing, he writes down his analysis of spaces to be unoccupied. And as I said, he, he cites on five-minute, minute increments, every minute from eight-twenty to eight-forty. And he comes up with one time, eight-thirty-three, when twenty-six of our spaces are occupied. And, and there are no excess spaces. Well, first of all, if you remember, he didn't count the handicap spaces. We have twenty-eight. So by the opponent's own expert testimony on the parking issue, there's no time when we don't have sufficient parking on site.
I hear what you're saying, but also there's, there's a couple other factors that logically come to my mind. Number one, I believe his analysis was based on this analysis, right?
He took our.
It wasn't based on backups by late people, and okay, contracts are there.
Right.
And they're broken all the time. We, we know.
Not by us.
But I'm sure you don't. But you're not going to tell someone spending, you know, thirty grand to go to school that they have to go home because they're five minutes.
We will, because we'll be, we will have a condition of approval enforceable as a zoning condition to, to abide by this drop-off schedule.
Okay, so what if there's an accident and there's no way you can get to school on time?
We take it seriously. I mean, that's, 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 I guess they come at eleven.
So McLaughlin stands for.
They come after, they could still come to school. They just can't come during that appointed, you know, peak time drop-off area. We're not going to kidnap out of school all day. Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I'm looking at a few things, okay? We have whether or not this will hold exactly. You know, with Nazi-like precision, sorry. But anyway, and that the traffic report, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, it used the miles per hour and added ten miles per hour, and I don't, I don't think they put, they did actual studies of the speed that the cars were going.
Correct.
Okay, so they didn't really do the. And then you have another issue.
That was done for purposes of sightlines, and the sightlines are just, the, the sightlines are not an issue. I mean, they, we, the, the, the for all the issues in this case, the sightlines are not an issue, but that, that was, that was what we did for the sightlines.
Then you have the issue of backing up into the road because there's nowhere else for cars to go if the parking lot is, if, you know, they're dropping them off, takes a few minutes, somebody has a problem with their kid or their something, it could be backed up, and if it backs up, it goes onto the road, so that's another.
Not with our schedule, not with the drop-off schedule, because even if you have an incident or a, a certain situation where one car might be delayed, we have more than sufficient queuing on site before, you know, you're going to ever reach a situation where there's a backup. And, you know, as I said before, you, you talk about, you know, anecdotal evidence or evidence you hear from the neighbors. You know, if you look at the videos that were submitted at the last hearing, none of them show any element of backup that would implicate, even in these worst-case scenarios that they're, they're depicting, that would in any way implicate our driveways. I mean, I think their support of, of what I'm trying to say about McLaughlin, and that is general concerns about neighborhood conditions or a specific intersection do not translate into the level of particularized, specific substantial evidence that would allow you to deny this permitted use based upon a special permit standard involving traffic.
Just to continue with my analysis of McLaughlin, okay, so there's, it stands for a few things, and one of them is very site-specific review and detail. So we have multiple neighbors. I don't know how many layers we got. A dozen or more. Eyewitness testimony, videos, pictures, testimony about how fast cars are going, how many cars are going, that is site-specific. That is evidence, okay?
It's evidence. I don't know that it's site-specific.
But people can see what's in their own community. They saw what their fact.
They see, they see what they believe to be problematic con- problematic matters relative to that intersection at certain times of day. That I accept. But what they don't accept is that that translates into specific particularized evidence to justify based upon this record, the denial of this permitted, of this permitted use.
But, but if you consider that a traffic study did not use their, their trip, trip generation stuff did not come from this. I know it's generally used.
It's everybody. It's all you're ever going to get.
I agree with it in this case.
You, you know, this commission is wrestling with the I T E. I've heard this before, and I, I don't mean this in any negative way, but if that's, if the rules are going to change, then we should let, because every application that comes before it, I'm sure the one that you're going to hear later tonight, all look to deal with analysis of traffic generation via the I T E standard.
I understand that.
And I don't know where you go.
I don't think our regulations say you have to use that or you don't have to.
No, what the regulations say, and what the case law says, though, is that you need to establish with substantial evidence, a particularized finding that there is a non-compliance with your promulgated special permit regulations. And I don't, you know, you're going to make that decision, but I don't think.
So, so what McLaughlin says just about special permits, okay? They have stuff that's used in cases they acknowledge that might not even need an expert. So I just, I just want to read some of the language here. It says, this is a Supreme Court decision, McLaughlin versus the town of Bethel. It had to do with a crematorium that put things in the air that could be harmful.
That was the claim. That was the claim.
It was denied, and then the appellate trial court agreed with the denial, appellate court agreed with the denial, Supreme Court overruled it based on that substantial evidence.
Correct.
But they did observe, thank you, what the law is. So they say the goal of the application for a special permit is to seek permission. They say to vary the use of a piece of property. I don't think that's correct here in our definition.
We're changing the use.
But without offending the uses permitted as of right in a particular zoning district. The rationale for special permits, were special exceptions, and they, they quite them, is that although certain uses are generally compatible with uses permitted as of right in zoning districts, the precise location and mode of operation must be regulated by the special permit process because of topography, traffic problems, neighboring uses, et cetera, of the site. Is, there's no page numbers on the one I have, but it's.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
There's a way down the decision. The special permit approval function may be delegated to a zoning commission, planning commissioner, or zoning board of appeals in order that the administrative agency to approve a special permit must determine that the proposed use is permitted, the standards in the regulation are satisfied, and the, any conditions necessary to protect public health, safety, convenience, and property values as established in statute eight, Dutch two, to be established. And they go on to observe multiple other cases. One of them was successfully denied based on not having adequate locks or security on their doors first, like, something like a halfway house or something like that. And they keep repeating site-specific evidence is needed. So that concerns me because, you know, this has come up in other cases. I don't know if you were on them, but we have guidelines that we like to follow, but they're not chiseled in stone. And I don't think you should hold a commission to something they've done in the past if it doesn't relate to this application on this site with these conditions that exists right now, that's been observed.
I'm not trying to do that. I'm simply, listen, at the end of the day, you'll act in your court, we're talking about cases. So as you acted administratively on the application before you, you'll act here quasi-judicially, okay? All I can tell you is, and you have McLaughlin, that at the end of the day. All I can tell you is, and you have McLaughlin, that at the end of the day. McLaughlin was an important case because it made it very clear that, as I said before. That you cannot base general concerns and speculation and mere worry without more do not qualify substantial evidence. Public testimony is not to be considered substantial evidence. This gets to the point we've been discussing. When it is not supported by anything other than speculation and conjecture on the part of those objecting to the proposed activities. That, Mr. Chairman, gets directly, respectfully, to, I think, the discussion you and I were having. I recognize you have a lot of evidence before you where neighbors are concerned about the present state of that intersection. And they are concerned about what impact this proposed use might have on that intersection. What you ultimately have to ask yourself is whether or not, under that standard. As we discussed, general concerns, speculation, and mere worry without more do not qualify as substantial evidence. Public testimony is not to be considered substantial evidence when it is not supported by anything other than speculation and conjecture on the part of those objecting. That's what, respectfully, I think you have here. Ultimately.
That's points, okay.
That's the.
I think it's been clear on McLaughlin where you stand, so just. I didn't finish reading what I was trying to read.
I'm sorry.
I don't.
If you have a specific question, ask them.
Yeah, I do. I, I do have a question. So I want to read one more passage and then ask a question. So. Thus, the type of evidence deemed legally sufficient by this court, the Supreme Court of Connecticut, in the aforementioned cases of a whole variety of cases. Consisted of facts specific to the relevant sites and pertinent to the required review. These precedents establish that the special permit process is discretionary. General considerations such as public health, safety, and welfare, which are enumerated in zoning regulations, may be the basis for denial of a special permit. And obviously, we need a fact-specific inquiry to support that. So is it your contention that we must follow what your expert said, what he quoted from the I T E manual? Even if it appears as though the evidence supplied by fact witnesses challenges that in terms of, um, trip generation, um. Or if it appears as though banks nowadays aren't the way they were twenty.
All speculation on your part, respectfully. There's no evidence, there's no evidence in the record. The only evidence in the record on the issue of traffic is from, uh, uh, Mr. Del Rio. The, the opponents chose not to address that issue. Uh, they only addressed the onsite parking issue. So the, the, certainly you have a right to consider. Generalized testimony, but you can't have that overrule the only expert testimony in the, in, in, in the record. That's uncontroverted, okay? And the other thing is, even if you take the testimony, the videos, as I've said before, that have been submitted by the opponents into consideration, they don't rise to anything like the level of a particularized finding that is required under McLaughlin. What, as I said, the videos basically don't show any issue with regard to access to and from our site. They, they basically all show backup from Bronson Road. Um, and, and so there's nothing in that record, even if you give them due consideration, that rises to the level of anything other than, hey, they're concerned about this intersection.
You're not saying we must follow the I T M F, are you?
No, I'm not saying you must follow.
Discretion.
We do, but you have discretion limited by the standard established by McLaughlin. Which is if you're going to exercise your discretion to deny the application, you have to have substantial evidence in the record of particularized findings that would support the denial of this specific proposed property use. And I don't think you have.
Using specific evidence for this site, yes.
And you don't have that.
I T E doesn't give that.
You don't, I T E is, is recognized for what it is. It's recognized to provide proper data in terms of trip generation. That's not the only thing you can consider, but it is an important element, especially when it's uncontradicted in your record.
Okay, just a couple of quick questions. With regard to I T E, um, what, what does the state of Connecticut use?
I T E, I T E.
Are there any other standards they use?
My knowledge, no, but I'm not a traffic engineer.
And then, um, what, uh, standards do, so I T E, to the best of your knowledge, is the only standard that's used.
That's the standard that I believe is used, or in the state of Connecticut.
And, and, um, the, the, um, neighbors were, had a traffic engineer, correct?
They did.
Yeah, and, and, um, do you have any questions about the competence of that traffic engineer?
I, I, I found his, you know, the only thing he analyzed was the sufficiency of onsite parking. I found his analysis to be flawed. But he offered no opinions with regard to the traffic generation, nor did he contradict a, any of the findings of, of Mr. Del Rio on the issue of traffic generation.
We believe that, um, the neighbor's traffic engineer was qualified competent.
I, I, from his resume that was submitted, I didn't challenge his ex, his competence. I did challenge his conclusions relative to the onsite parking consideration.
With regard to the, uh, trip generation, and I believe that, um. The applicant's, uh, traffic engineer stated that a traffic impact analysis was not conducted because the amount of traffic that's generated was, did not meet that threshold. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, could you, um, there any instances where we've done a traffic impact analysis? Um, without, uh, being required to because it didn't meet the threshold?
Not to my knowledge.
So we didn't do a T I A because it was required under I T E, sort of, for all the acronyms. Um, but we, we complied with the industry-recognized standards for such analysis.
That was the testimony that was offered, yes.
I just, I, it's, we've been at this for a few sessions. I just wanted to recap my memory, refresh my memory.
That's, I think that's a fair recap of what was.
Mr. Harrison.
Just letting you clear, are we, are you saying that we're not allowed to have a critical look at traffic estimates?
Not at all.
Well, I was going to finish, but. No, understand me. I know I T is a standard, but again, I just struggle with it because it's not specific to our town so much, but we, I think we should and can have a critical look at that data when we have fact witnesses who travel up and down that area.
I, I have no, I have no quarrel with that. Again, my, my response to that is not to quarrel with that. It is simply to respectfully point out that under McLaughlin. The standard will ultimately be whether or not you have specific substantial, particularized information that goes directly to the proposed property and the proposed property use that would outweigh the general assumptions that can be found based upon you establishing this as a permitted use in your regulations.
Just one more question. Um, just going back to the Stonewall. Stonewalls presumably are expensive. And you've agreed to that condition. Do you find it to be an undue burden on the applicant?
We wouldn't have agreed to it if we did. I mean, we, there, there's not, listen, there, there's nothing more important to my clients. They have four other schools. They've been in this business, devoted to it for decades. There's nothing more important than the safety of the children. Attorney Fall, please. Yeah, I mean, look, you've been patient. Um, I guess what I would say in summary, we've kind of covered most of my summary points. But I'll go back to one thing we haven't discussed a lot tonight. I think perhaps it's a proper context to, to, to end here. There is a significant need for childcare throughout the state and in Fairfield. There are few programs that offer, uh, full daycare services like we do. You've received letters. I've been overwhelmed with Facebook posts, which I did turn to burden you with. Uh, but the bottom line is the availability of quality daycare provides a very significant peace of mind to hard-working parents. And it's something that improves outcomes for children. So when you're considering all this thing. And we're lost in the minutia of walls and I T E and, um. Intersection standards, please consider the children. Because this is an application that at its heart is about children's and families and need. And that's important. And that's why you permit this use in this zone. And I said at the beginning, and I will say with, uh, all the commitment I can muster, this is a perfect site. For a daycare facility such as this, operated by the kind of people who will operate it and their track record for innovative and quality daycare programs. And so please take all of that into consideration. And at the end of the day, with the way this can be conditioned. I think you can look everyone, including those who've come to you during the course of these proceedings with concerns and say, we've addressed that. We've addressed the safety issue with a wall. We've addressed the issue with regard to your concerns about off-site parking with a condition of approval that will bind this applicant to the drop-off schedule that is imposed. And it is important to keep in mind that that doesn't mean the kid can never go to school. Just means you'll have to come, you know, later in the morning when the peak times have. Reach. And when you make that final determination with regard to traffic. Bury yourself in McLaughlin, because that's why I submitted it. But keep in mind that what we're asking you to do here is not approve a fast food restaurant or an ice cream stand. But we're asking you to approve, approve a very much-needed facility for kids and families in this town. And we're open, if you do that, and you look at all the evidence with your normal diligence and consideration, as you always do. You'll approve the application. Finishing with a crescendo, Alexis.
And then, again, this is your app, the applicant, this is the neighborhood design business district. The applicant stated there was some need in the area that has come forward in recent weeks. Can you just provide those stats again?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Sorry, so I, I believe the applicant is Miss Small?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he provided some statistics in the last week or so about.
People of interest?
Yeah, in, in the neighborhood.
Do we have any updated information in terms of any recent interest?
Uh, nothing updated.
Just what we testified to last time.
You just mind repeating it?
Mr. Small, come up and just introduce yourself.
Read it back into the record, please.
So she can read, yeah, exactly what you said.
Uh, Lee Small. So we had, uh, just by word of mouth, we had thirty inquiries. Um, of those, ten actually filed an enrollment form. Of those ten, uh, nine were from Fairfield. And one was from South Park.
Thank you. That's it. I mean, we very much appreciate it. We hope you consider all this. As I said, at the end of the day, in our mind, it's about families and children.
Thank you, Attorney Fall.
I'll close the public hearing on this application, one sixty-one Hillside Road. Uh, call the next public hearing. Twenty-one ninety Post Road, special exceptions, special permanent coastal site plan application of. U A G Fairfield C P L L C pertaining to new construction. Automobile dealership in the Design Industrial District and Northern Commercial District. Only give like a two minutes just to let people. Uh, thank you, Attorney, Ms. Harrigan. Thank you for putting that in the chat. Willinger, when's the last time you presented in Fairfield?
A while ago.
I don't think I've. Harrigan, are we still on the record? Um, closing the door for a few minutes to let them get out, or?
Yeah.
Thank you. And we can, it's going to get high hot. Attorney Willinger, for yours.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chuck Willinger. I'm a partner in law firm of Willinger, Willinger and Ducey. And, uh, I represent the applicant, U A G Fairfield C P L L C. That is a Penske Corporation-affiliated company. Uh, my client is a proposed tenant of one ninety Post Road property, which is the subject matter of our applications. I think for ease of, uh, on my part, I'll refer to that entity as either, uh. Trade name, which is Portia of Fairfield or, uh, applicant. We're here tonight, uh, seeking four different approval. A section twenty-seven special exception approval, a section twenty-four special permit approval. Section twenty-five special permit approval and a coastal site plan. Those are the, uh, specific approvals that, uh, we are seeking. Now, uh, just to give you an idea, because I, it doesn't seem like we're going to get through tonight. What we had intended to do is I would set the table, so to speak, for the application. I'd introduce Peter Romano of Land Tech Engineering to walk you through the engineering plans. Kevin Spink, who's here, will walk you through our architect, walk you through the architectural plans. Uh, then I would get up and explain the operations so you get some sense of, of, of what my client, how my client is going to do business on the site if it's approved. And then I was going to introduce Cory Chase, our traffic expert. Uh, and, uh, Norman Benedict, who did our real estate impact, uh. Uh, and then I would conclude, uh, with, uh, some of the legal issues that I heard tonight, substantial evidence and so forth. Some of the legal issues involved in, uh, in the, uh, in this, in these applications. I may have to, Norman Benedict, I may have to put him on a little earlier than anticipated because he has a very important anniversary and he's planned a trip to. Uh, and he won't be here after this evening, but I'd like to get him on a little earlier, perhaps. So with, with that in mind, um, I would also say we have, I have two individuals from Penske. Corporation that are here to answer any questions. They don't necessarily need to testify unless you have any specific. One is Stephen Capasso. He is the Vice President of Operations and the Head of Construction. And he's in charge right now of forty-seven different dealerships of the, uh, Penske Group. And I have the, uh, New York, the Connecticut, New York, uh, Vice President of, uh, Penske Auto. Uh, Brian Beadland, and he's here as well, and I, as well as our experts. Uh, and I'm assisted here by Rob Belito, uh, help me, uh, get through this. Now, the reason that we're asking for this, these approvals, uh, is that, um. Right now, as you know, we have two facilities, you may know, we have two facilities. We have four fifty Schofield Avenue, which is our service center. And we have four seventy-five, that's in Fairfield. And we also have in Fairfield four seventy-five Commerce Drive, which is our showroom. And our, uh, retail, uh, facility. Uh, and we are, as virtually all, uh, car dealerships are under, uh, a contract with the manufacturer. In this case, it's the Porsche, uh, company in Germany. And according to our contract, uh, there are various guidelines from time to time that we're required to follow. Uh, and this is generic to all, uh, dealerships. Uh, one of the most pressing requirements, and, and we're under time constraints as well. Uh, is, uh, to combine both the service center and the retail. We want one facility. Uh, that kind of combines both. And it's, uh, in a prototip, prototypical, uh, uh, building known as the Generation Five, which you'll hear a lot about building, uh, this evening. Uh, if we don't, uh, comply with that, there are very dire, uh, economic consequences, uh, for my client. So that's the reason we're here. We need one location where we can have, uh, both service and retail in our showroom. We have looked, uh, throughout Fairfield, because we're here in Fairfield. We've been here for a long time, and it's our desire to stay Fairfield. There's only one location that works for us in this town, and that is the twenty-one ninety Post Road property. Um, so, um. That's why we need these. that's why we need these approvals. Now, I must say that, and I want you to know early on, that the design component of that building, we have no flexibility with. That is the building that we have to build. The good part about it, in my way of thinking, is that it is a wonderful, it is really an attractive building. I have seen that, the actual building that they built Naples, Florida. And it's a magnificent, magnificent building. And so hopefully you will agree that the design of that building is something that is worthy of the town of Fairfield. Now, I'm gonna have Rob hand out an exhibit book. And don't be with a bit, but because it's actually gonna expedite my, my presentation. And I'll be referring to these tabs either as a tab or as an exhibit. And I would appreciate it as you know, we should go through the tabs in the order that I referenced them. And if you have.
Is this just selected from the application?
This is, what is this? This is what I call an exhibit book.
Okay.
All the petitioners exhibit. No, the code minutes are not. That's in your package, isn't that?
Code minutes are in our record, Mr. White?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just a question. Is this different than what we have?
I haven't seen it, so.
You don't have this.
Is everything that's in here in the record already? This is new submissions?
Not everything. I mean, there's some pictures.
Why not? Well, we got a four hundred page document.
I think, I think you have the two expert reports. These are some of the things that, that I'm gonna be talking about.
These will all be put into the record. Maybe studies or some of these are new.
They're put on the record like right now.
Alright, so.
It'll be uploaded.
Can we get these electronically?
I don't know, Rob, can we do this electronically?
I think we can do it.
During, well, during the hearing, you have it in your hand, so I, I find that's a little bit better. I'm an old guy, what do I know? So, so Exhibit A. Exhibit A is, it's all the same today's Connecticut Post. That's the exterior of the building. It also has two shots of the public access. Public access, basement area that was proposed two shots of that. Exhibit B, shot of, this happens to be the Beechwood facility. But it is the interior of the facility and it is, this is the Generation Five building. This is exactly how it looks. As I said, I was in the one in Naples, Florida. You'll see the, and it's kept like all Penske automotive dealerships in pristine condition. So there's a few shots of the interior. See what it looks like, see the vision a little bit.
Five, the definition is like that's the fifth generation of show floors by Penske, is that?
I don't really know. Put that down as a question. I'll, I'll bring it back to you how it came out to be Generation Five. I think this is probably the fifth version of their facilities. Exhibit C is a rather important exhibit. And what this is, is obviously from inside the facility, looking towards the door to the service center, towards the post road. And when you look at this service center there are two lanes, they're both one-way as the cars drive in. And it can accommodate four cars on each side of the building inside the door. Then from outside this building and outside the door until the post road, and Peter will show you on his plans, there's another one hundred feet, which can accommodate five cars in two lanes. So that means we could have a total of eighteen vehicles driving into this facility for service and not impact or have any queuing on the post road. Now, when you hear our actual traffic counts, you realize that we'll never have that type of traffic generated at one time in this facility. The ninety-five percent of the service, by the way, is by appointment only. And so we very infrequently, based upon our current operations on Schofield Avenue, I can tell you, we very infrequently even fill the service area. We come in, register, and they go into the various service base. The existing Schofield Drive facility has one quarter of the queuing size as this building that we have here. And there's never been a problem. Never been a problem.
Are there two stories to this? Are there two floors?
Two stories, you're right. There's a mezzanine, the second is will be a mezzanine. We'll, we'll show you, Peter will show you when we.
And there's an elevator going to the second.
Okay, so that's, that's just gives you the bird's eye view of what the facility is gonna look like. There'll be much more detail when Peter Romano gets, gets done. But before we go on to the next exhibit, and we'll be talking about the applicant, there's one more requirement that I do wanna discuss with you. And it's a timing issue vis-à-vis our, our time period with the manufacturer and their contracts. We, it is our desire, if you feel this is worthy of your approval, it is our desire and our hope to get in the ground with a foundation, just a foundation permit. So before the winter sets in, so we'd like to have our foundation started to go by, certainly by the first week of December. So hopefully we're here in September, that's not gonna be an issue, but I, I do wanna you know, let you know about that. That's not your problem, it's our problem, but we really are under pressure to, to get the foundation in before the winter.
Two hours tonight, can you finish?
Yeah, I don't think so. I don't know, I'm gonna try like hell. I know that with, talking about the applicant, I know that with every applicant, the identity of that applicant, the reputation, and most importantly, the ability of the applicant to fulfill any condition of approval, to build the proposed development, and more importantly, to operate it, I know that's of paramount importance to this commission. You wanna know you're dealing with the type of developer that's gonna deliver and the type of operator that's gonna deliver. As I said before, Penske, the applicant is a Penske affiliated company. The chairman of that company is an individual by name of Roger Pesky. He is pretty famous, actually very famous in the auto industry. On Exhibit D, I have just a quick outline of his bio, because he's an exceptional individual. He was born in Ohio, fell in love with cars as a very young gentleman. He started racing cars in Philadelphia. He was in Sports Illustrated as the Driver of the Year. He started his, he retired in sixty-five, started his first automobile dealership in Philadelphia. He is the owner of the Indianapolis five hundred Speedway facility. He's won that race more than anyone else, by the way. Just a little bit of information, he's won it twenty times. And the last one being this year, on May twenty-seventh. He's the Chairman of Penske Corporation. He's been inducted in five various motor racing associations. And he's been personally involved in every decision that has been made to bring this facility here and including the plans and and everything else to bring this facility here to Fairfield. Now, the Penske Auto Group is Exhibit Tab E. Operates automobiles and commercial trucks and dealerships in the United States, Canada, and Western Europe. It distributes commercial vehicles in Australia and New Zealand. It owns a major share of Penske Transportation. That's an entity with four hundred thousand trucks, trailers, and tractors. Fortune five hundred, Russell one thousand, and Russell three thousand. The point I'm making is this is a very substantial entity, an applicant who wants to do nothing but right. And will make sure that this facility is the premier Porsche facility in the state of Connecticut. I mean that sincerely. Talking about the Generation Five building, this would be the first one, Generation Five building in Fairfield County. There is one on state, but we're the first one in Fairfield County. The, more important, I think, than what the financial strength of this applicant, is their track record here in Fairfield. I wanna first, the last exhibit on F is Tab X. Gives you, tells you that more, more of their financial strength is what they have done for the community, the greater Fairfield community. I've listed all the different activities they're involved in. Children's sport, Habitat for Humanity, Little League, and so forth. And I've also listed in that exhibit their various awards. Which is important because they've won, the last one is Porsche's Premier Dealer Award. I have in this exhibit that they've won it eight times. Brian has told me no is wrong, it's ten times. That's the number one award given to Porsche dealerships in the United States. The, so they do a good job. They do a good job for the industry, obviously for their dealerships and for the community as well. Now, talking about the applicant, you could forget all this because you have or should have firsthand knowledge of what they've done here in Fairfield. So you don't have to listen to my biased view of how great they are and how much they're gonna. They've been doing business here in Fairfield for twenty-four years. Actually, on next October sixteenth will be the twenty-fourth anniversary. October sixteen of two thousand, they purchased Porsche, Audi, and Mercedes-Benz from Mr. Bottner. And they started doing business here and been here, the Penske Group, since that time. And if you've visited any of those three facilities for Porsche, Mercedes or Audi, you'll know that they keep them pristine condition. Point of me discussing this applicant, I think, is that if approved, I can assure you that the type of corporation you want, it'd be well received anywhere, but we, it's the type of corporation that should remain in Fairfield and they really wanna remain in Fairfield. Okay, let's talk about the property. Twenty-one ninety Post Road. As you all know, highlighted that fact, was the home of the former Xi battery manufacturing facility. That Xi and its predecessor companies were on the site at least, and operating on that site, at least from nineteen fifty-one to nineteen eighty-one. Their use, we all know, was intensive. Buildings, their buildings, talking about density and coverage, their buildings covered the entire site. If you take a quick look at Exhibit G, you'll see in Exhibit G, a reddish circle, that's the site. You can see to the left of that circle, that's Mill River. And all those buildings, it's almost virtually the entire site, that was Xi and Bath. Its use was intensive. It used and its operations led, you all know. And for thirty years, basically, it polluted that site. Now, when it ceased operations, the D E E P and the EPA got involved. Said you have to start remediating. And they did. But then, to the credit of a lot of people, including Fair Plan, and including the Harbor Management Committee and the Mill River Wetlands Committee and elected officials and appointed officials, the Conservation Commission, all these people became stakeholders. I understand that Fair Plan was interpleaded in the remediation. And that type of stakeholder interest really forced the D E E P, despite what you may hear from other people, but it forced them to impose, in our opinion, the strictest remediation requirements any other commercial development that I've been involved in. They have imposed, they imposed such requirements that that site is today is clean to residential standards, residential standards, which is unheard of from an old industrial site like this. So what did they do? Let's quickly. They dredged, removed eleven acres of Mill River contaminated sediment. They, and, and as well as soil from, from this property up, upland. They, from the years oh-six to eighteen, they installed eighteen groundwater monitoring wells. They tested continually for lead and E T P H was, which is a petroleum hydrocarbon. And after the remediation was all done, near twenty-eighteen, they installed post remediation groundwater monitoring wells. After two years of all that, after the remediation was done, after the two years of post remediation work, in twenty-twenty, if you turn to Tab H, you'll see, Tab H, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, D E E P, issued a completion of cleanup activities. I've underscored some of the things I wanna bring to your attention. But in this document, they released Xi Group's financial assurance and liability requirements. Now, ladies and gentlemen, they, D E E P, not do that, would not release polluter financial assurance and liability requirements unless they were very, very sure that that remediation was done and done right. They were released in this document. At the very last line of this page, it says, "No waste management unit closure obligations remain or exist, and no further remediation is needed." The next page is the actual certificate of completion issued by the D E E P. And it says, "The issuance of the certificate is based on the completion of environmental cleanup work required by the state laws and regulations, as well as state and federal guidance." Ladies and gentlemen, this is as clean a bill of health for a piece of property as you can get these documents. Now, Tab I, if you wanna get into weeds, you could get, you could read at your convenience with some of the more deeper, detailed stuff. At this point. Mr. Chairman, I know that Mr. Stanky has a letter with raising some of his concerns and questions. And I know the paper today raised that. I, I think possibly you may have letters from other people or people testifying after we present this. So what I'd like to do is not address that, those in particular, the Stanky letter now, because there could be other people with the same issue. I'd like to do that by way of rebuttal. I don't wanna be duplicative. So I would reserve the right on the topic of Stanky's letter and perhaps other people to, to address that during rebuttal, because it really is a rebuttal issue. Alright, so the property today, in our opinion, is clean. And I've got to emphasize, and I can't emphasize enough the fact that this is really a success story, and the town of Fairfield should feel really happy about it. Those stakeholders that I mentioned helped, helped achieve the the real most important objective of the EPA, the DEEP, the Economic Development Commission. And that is turning horribly polluted piece of property into, with your approval hopefully, a multimillion dollar commercial development. That's what, that's what the goal is of those organizations. And it was achieved because of these stakeholders and you, and you ought to applaud yourself because it's, it's really a significant story. This commercial developer that we propose is going to bring substantial tax dollars, jobs, tertiary economic development to the town and to the business community. And that's what the DEEP and the EPA want to accomplish. Now, the property, we're going to introduce Peter in a minute, six point two acres. We propose a forty-nine thousand square foot floor area. Actually, the footprint is about forty-two thousand, but with the second floor, it's forty-nine thousand. And we're going to create a substantial public access area that Peter will talk about. The property, as you may know, is located two-thirds in the design industrial district, two-thirds, and one-third in your design commercial district. And in both districts, our use is permitted by way of special exception. I'll just show you, just quickly, tab J, which is yellow. And you could, I, I just outlined the D I D, the Design Industrial District for and the pink on our site and across the street is the Design Commercial. The building itself is entirely, by the way, in the Design Industrial. So at this point, I'm going to introduce Land Tech.
Quick question about the property?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
There was an issue when I was on the R T M, ten or twelve years ago, about a pent road, like a paper road.
Yes.
You know, some kind of dispute with the town and Martel Restaurant. Who owns that now and is that part of your development or is that still?
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna see.
We're gonna address it later.
Well, we will address it later too, but that, that, that issue has been revoked. I wasn't involved in the resolution, but I do know this little cutout is Martel's.
Yes. The pen draw went alongside it towards the back. Okay, you'll deal with that. And then one other question about legalities, I didn't, I don't think I saw the easement language here. We were given a working draft copy of the easement language, is that going to be?
When I get to the coastal area management, just this morning.
I mean, the legal language of the document.
No, no, I'm going to explain that, just this morning, about eleven o'clock, we reached final agreement between the town attorney, the conservation and my office on the language. So I do, and I'm going to be submitting that. We, that just happened. We put green on this morning.
So we're going to copy that?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Okay, Peter.
Thank you. Yeah, we figured out where we're sitting. I'm Pete Ramato, I'm the principal with Land Tech, we are a site civil and environmental firm out of Westport, Connecticut. With me tonight also is Bob Walker, our project engineer on the Porsche dealership. Which is typically the case with Chuck, because he's so thorough, he's pretty much taken the way out of my sails as far as the presentation, but I'm going to walk you through the site plan. Just hit some of the technical things and then somebody who can speak to the aspects of it, like the architecture and traffic and stuff.
We have this presentation in our record.
Yes.
It's not clear or just hard to tell?
We sent it to and so again.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we also have a memory stick here, if you want us to leave a memory stick with you too, but it's, it's been sent over.
Stick up just a tad, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah, we sent a, I have a, excuse me, I have a memory stick also with the presentation as well. Wayne has. So I'll take you through the steps, Chuck said the property's six point two acres of land. We've actually dedicated point nine of it as public access, which is typically associated with the coastal area management site span. Let me step back just one minute, our application tonight is for a special permit and a coastal area management site plan application. So in addition to the design of the actual site for the building and the parking and stuff, as part of the coastal area management requirements, we have to dedicate public access. And in this particular case, we're dedicating almost an acre of land and we'll get into it in a little bit. It's probably one of the most robust public accesses we've done in a long time and a very nice spot, take advantage of it. So the building is, Chuck said, is forty-two thousand square foot footprint, total forty-nine thousand useful area inside on the balance of the property, which is just a little bit more than, if you take out the accessway, it's, it's about four point three acres of land. It's going to be developed with the building on it. Just shy of four acres of parking lot, which is about three totally, there's going to be three hundred and thirty, excuse me, three hundred and twenty-two parking spaces of that. Even particularly designated them, but on there is going to be inventory space for vehicles of two hundred and five. And then we dedicate about a hundred and fifteen spaces for customers and repair vehicles and rental, excuse me, owner cars and basically the ancillary use to the, for the project, excuse me, to the, the operation of the or dealership. So we were, we were charged with a couple of things, providing site engineering for the property, the storm drainage, the landscaping, the lighting. That's all represented in the package that got submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission. But take you through the steps, this is, maybe somebody remember us from the eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike project for the Post Road residential people, similar situation. In this particular instance, the drainage was treated a little bit differently than what you're normally see, right? Normally you see somebody trying to contain all the quantity of runoff that's coming off the property. Usually put them in those eagle shaped things, they stick on the ground and put a whole bunch of crushed stone. And I mean, in this instance, because we're at the lower end of the watershed, we're charged with actually creating better water quality before it gets discharged into the Mill River. And the way we do that is a couple of ways. In the, I guess, within the being in the westerly corner of the property, there is a series of those infiltrators as well, but their size is such a way that, so we actually reduce the pollutants that come off the site, as you can imagine, in a parking lot like this, they're susceptible to runoff, you know, things from even oil dripping from vehicles, just the general parking lot debris that's get collected. So in addition to that, we have what's called a hydrodynamic storm scepter, which is a product that is put in at the end of our storm drainage system that reduces the pollutants from entering the Mill River. The interior drainage is connected to, there'll be oil and grease traps in there. Those will all be connected to the sanitary sewer, they won't go into the storm drainage. All of our fluids and stuff are in dikes or containment, so if there's any leakage, it's contained inside the building. The, the eventual storm drainage discharges, which does now, but overland, it goes into the Mill River. If you've been out there at all, I don't know if you took a walk on it, there's a section just at the area which, where the water edge is and the bulkhead, it's there. There's a section of what's referred to as riprap. And essentially the water drains that way and goes through that riprap area and makes its way to the Mill River. In our plan, our stormwater drainage is going to be discharged in the very same spot, but it's going to be flooded in this water treatment system before it gets discharged into the Mill River. We submitted those plans to your engineering department and received a favorable response on the way we decided to mitigate the stormwater runoff in this particular instance. We've been in front of the code enforcement committee, which included the Conservation Commission, the W P C A, engineering, conservation, we got favorable force from everyone. We've also been, this is on Route One, it is a state highway, we've been involved with the Department of Transportation. We modified, you never actually ever saw it, we modified a driveway, they asked us to push the drive a little bit further to the east. That's reflected here. There's a driveway that you enter to get onto the site for customers that are just visiting there to potentially purchase vehicles. And then, as Chuck mentioned, they have a very unique system, well thought out service area, it's right at the center of the property that if anybody has never been to a Porsche or BMW or even a Land Rover dealership, they typically drive up to the door, the people, service people open the doors and you drive right into it, it's always by appointment, there's no queuing issue. Couple people from D O T asked us to go through the process of how the actual appointments and service daily take place. And you'll perhaps hear from one of the, either Steve Capasso or Brian from Porsche, all their appointments are generally by, excuse me, all of their service at the property is usually by appointment only. D O T also, you might be familiar with it, you've seen it driving through Westport, I don't know how many of it, what's going on right now in Fairfield, but soon there's going to be the same kind of sidewalk improvements that's going on up down the Post Road in Westport. So we've incorporated on our plans, all the D O Ts suggested improvements along it, which include new sidewalks, no shelf, catch basins. And they, you know, at D O T, while we've got a letter of favorable favorable response to our actual plan, at some point prior to construction, will actually be the contractor actually goes in what's called against an encroaching permit, which allows you to do work inside the right of way and we'll be doing inside the right of way. The other comments we got from was Department of Environmental Protection, in particular regarding the public access. You know, D E E P administers, oversees the coastal area management site plan applications and they get referrals from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we got, I would say generally, a favorable response from them with a couple of suggestions, which we're going to try to incorporate into our plans. The plans that are up on the board and we they're also in your file, there's a couple little tweaks on here that we did for, for D E E P and also for the Conservation Commission. They asked us to change a couple species of plants. And they have, Conservation asked us to change the walkway through the a public access way to gravel versus batuminous pavement, which is asphalt. And then they, D E P suggested if we could perhaps provide some access down to the water for fishing and crabbing, which I, we, our position is we think we provided that. That there's, we may, they've suggested that perhaps we work with them on some alternative, but we feel we've addressed that. Quite frankly, most of, some of you are familiar with it, public access was many, many times is limited to a four foot wide path that gets access to the water. Emily, can you call up the renderings of the actual public access? I think it's worth taking a look at. You know, it's been out there at all. Pretty good rendering, makes it look like it's actually there, but this is a view of, that's what it looks like right, thanks Emily. That's what it looks like right now, standing with your back to the train tracks, looking out towards the post road. And they've got those blocks here to sort of protect people from going into the water, but if you flip to the next picture, that's what it's going to look like at the end. We're introducing some tall grasses along the shoreline, there'll be some lower grasses in the area that are adjacent to Porsche. The idea is to, some park benches there gave you, be able to get access to the water. It becomes a very nice area to, to, to utilize, you know, as passive recreation over there. There's one more, I think, Emily, on the post road towards the train tracks, if you can scroll to that.
After that, Commissioner Harrison has a question.
So that's it, that gives you a good idea, we added bike racks. I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you, D E P asked for one more thing. They did a thorough look at this little piece of property, interestingly, and they knew what the bite of the rouse were, they knew what's accessible to this particular site and they came back to and asked, we provided two parking spaces for the public access, which is typical. They asked us if we could add more, so actually the plans include five parking spaces for the public access way. So, happy to answer some questions, yep.
Yeah, just on the public, can you just describe how the public would actually go to the public access? It seems somewhat restrictive to the public, just based on what?
I forget that is.
Just based on what, maybe you could explain?
No, it's, it's wide open to the, yeah, I mean, yeah, if you go by there right now, there's chain link fence, that's coming down. You're going to be able to walk off the sidewalk from the post road right into that. What's a good picture?
Is there a lighting plan for that?
No.
So. Okay, so.
Typical, yeah.
I was just curious, just to make a safe area.
It's an interesting point, I've never seen a public access like, I mean, sometimes public access ways are all long, like a facility, right? You got a property or a building on the water, right, and the public access is that's interesting, I never really, we've never really put lighting on public access.
And they'll be having park benches?
For me?
Have any park benches?
There's three park benches in there. But that shows it up, if, are they able to see anything, Emily, on their, on their computers? Okay. There you go, so that whole area is Harrison. There'll be a fence between the Porsche dealership, pardon me?
I'm just, I'm just trying to.
That's the walkway, all right? But if you see the hard line to the right of that public, of the walkway, that's a fence.
I don't see that.
You see the dark line, it's, you see the dark line is curved?
Yeah.
The walkway.
Pointer's not going to work on the TVs, put it on the screen there.
He's got a heart. Hold on, yeah, this is maybe just walk up, if you mind just showing. Walk up, see him.
And you're showing us?
Hold on, Commissioner Harrison's still up.
If you can, yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so the fence line is this line here, you see running up and down, kind of behind these trees. And then everything on this side is open to the public, the connection to the post road. And then here's the sidewalk along the top of the slope.
You just identify yourself for the record.
My name is Robert Walker, I'm a civil engineer of Land Tech.
Thank you.
Commissioner Braun, then leave.
Okay, so. The fence again, can you identify the plan, is this in the revised plans or the original plan?
This is in the revised plans, we created a blow up landscape plan of this area.
So that's online now, that's been posted?
That is online, correct.
So we got those yesterday, but they're dated like last week, I think, right? They were posted, we just got those.
You just got the revised date.
Okay, so the vertical line that's perpendicular to the post road, that is the fence separating the public area from the Penske area, the Porsche area?
Easement line and the fence line directly next to each other.
And what kind of fence is that and what are those little round circles?
So on the backside of the fence, there are bollards on the Penske side, so not visible from the public access. That's to prevent vehicles, if someone was to break in and try to steal a vehicle, being able to drive through the fence and exit the site.
Because it looks like it's on the left side, the bollard.
So the, the bollards are here, here's the fence.
Oh, what's the other line then?
That's the curb line.
Oh, yeah, what is that?
That's not the fence, that's not the fence, that's the curb line for the parking area located on the adjacent.
And where's the parking for the people going into the public easement area?
There are five parking spaces located down here, directly off the curb cut on the post road. And there's a sidewalk connection from this parking directly to the rest of the path. And a bike rack located in that area as well.
Because I saw another plan, I think, I said, that showed thirty or forty spaces in this area.
So on, on the other side of the fence, there's parking for Penske to use in the Porsche facility that is not accessible to the public. These spaces, closest to the post road, are where the public access.
And is there, I saw in the easement language, which may or may not have been changed by now, that there are certain rules and regulations time that people would be allowed to go to the public area as well as activities they'd be allowed to do. Maybe you could just explain it since we're talking about it now, just so we understand that.
Well, under the easement agreement, that's been, as I said, decided hours, I think, I'll take it out, you'll have an exhibit.
I thought it was like seven to seven or something.
I think that hasn't changed, seven to seven. That's why they, they don't, we want the conservation lights with anything, because in the summer it'll be light till seven o'clock and then they want
You don't want to welcome people outside after.
So we don't need lights in that area, but seven to seven, and what was your other?
Other activities that are restricted in the public easement area.
Oh, yes, we all have the specific language, in fact, that we've got.
So this is, yeah, because that was mentioned in the narrative on the revised plans.
I was going to go over this with. Going to go over this with when we talked about the cam, but I might as well. You have the question. So right now this public act, this public access conservation easement agreement with Rob and of course, the is between uh the current owner, twenty one ninety Post Road LLC landlord. And it's between my client U H E granting to the town and to the Conservation Commission point nine four acres, which is, which will be described as an exhibit to the, we don't have the exact legal description yet, but it's that nine point nine four on your plan. It's subject to the third whereas says it's subject to and it assumes we get approval, because this won't take effect unless we obviously unless we get approval. Two says uh that it's a perpetual exclu- on page two exclusive easement and uh a perpetual conservation easement. Conservation easement is number three, and that precludes uh the owner or the from excavating, filling, grading, mowing, or removing vegetation in this area without the prior approval of the commission. And then to speak to your question specifically, Commissioner Brown, paragraph four says the public use uh is defined as a use to uh enjoy the easement area for passive recreational uses. Seven days a week between the hours of seven AM to seven PM or dusk. The town will now, the town uh in the future, we had a conversation with the Conservation Commission. In the future, they have the option and the right exercisable in their own discretion to expand the use to include fishing and crabbing. Initially, there won't be fishing and crabbing. And uh that's, I guess, for some internal reasons, I'm not quite sure, but they have the right uh to do that. That's why when Pete said, uh Peter mentioned the DEP recommendation about fishing and crabbing, that's really not applicable now fishing and crabbing uh and until some, perhaps until some later date when the town and or so uh the commission, Conservation Commission wanted. It may have to do with uh some liability issues. I'm not quite sure. Anyway, um what is not included to speci- specifically to is not included active uses such as swimming, ball playing, roller skating, skateboarding. Do you see that language? Flying of kites, drones, or uh model airplanes, launching boats, sailboats, or other floating devices and similar types of activity. So nothing active. Uh also, we don't want loud or rowdy behavior, playing of loud music. That's pretty standard uh uh language. Uh and then down at the end, about the sixth line down on page two, uh it says that the town or commission should have no responsibility maintenance, repair, replacement of the bulkhead or the stormwater discharge structure and area. Pete, could you turn, point to that structure that storm?
I'm reading that they do have responsibility. Maybe I'm reading the wrong.
No, the town shall have no responsibility.
The bulkhead, where's that?
The bulkhead is there. And this.
And this hatched area is a point of stormwater discharge.
And what this says is that the town will give an easement to Post Road, that's the owner. They'll give an an access right to maintain and repair the bulkhead. So the post road will maintain and repair the bulkhead. And U A G, my client, will have access to maintain and repair the storm discharges. So uh that's on us.
Post Road is the developer or the owner?
Post Road is the owner.
And U A G is the?
Is the port.
Tenant, okay.
So we'll take care of the drainage. Post Road will take care of the bulkhead. Unless, of course, damage is done by the town through their negligence. That's the only carve out. And then the rest of the easement has uh, you know, typical lawyer language.
I did see an old one that was redlined that there was um indemnification. Indemnify you, indemnify us, because I thought they X that out. Is that still, is it a mutual indemnification now or do they take that out?
It it mutual is in there. It absolutely is.
The one I saw that had like a red line on it and it had this direction of indemnification where the town indemnifies you.
Except it says in number five.
Yeah.
That's why they took it out. Except to the extent that Post Road or my client is negligent or intentional that we get uh and inflict damage uh on the town and uh and then defies us.
Does it say that you indemnify us except for our negligence?
Thing is, we're not, other than constructing the improvements, we're doing nothing else. This says the repairs and maintenance of these improvements, except for the bulkhead and the storm drainage is on us. Everything else is on the town and the and that and other impro- improvements for the commission.
It seems like the only structures there really that would require maintenance would be that discharge area for stormwater as well as the bulkhead itself.
That's what I'm saying.
So why wouldn't you indemnify us for whatever?
Doing anything. We're just constructing it and we go away.
Maintain it.
No, no. We're there, except for those two. We have the duty to maintain that. Except for that, there's nothing else to indemnify. We have an affirmative obligation.
Yeah, it's kind of, okay. And then I I did have a question about the location of the stormwater discharge. Notice that the um the bulkhead does not go all the way up to the railroad tracks. There's a whole section above there, which is kind of like, you can see it from the post road even, kind of like a delta or a sloped grassy area. I thought you would have stormwater going there into the Mill River instead of through an engineered structure. Is, how is it going into the Mill River now?
It's going through that structure. It's there already. It's Pete Ramon of Atlantic. It's going that way. The storm drainage is going. That crestone is there right now.
Through in the middle of the bulkhead?
And so we're enhancing it with new rip rap, but we're putting it in the same spot.
And up at the top, is anything being done there? Like where it's natural and there's no bulkhead?
Just like it is. What you see is what we're doing.
That's not going to be part of the drainage system at all, the sort of natural.
No need to. I mean, there's the drainage that runs off the public access way is going to continue the way it is right now. Runs over land and whatever makes it says Mill River makes to Mill River. Only this, only the new impervious areas on the site is going to get picked up and put through the storm drainage.
And then as far as public access to the river, how is that going to be accomplished?
Well, the it's, this river is runs all along the public.
But how do you get there? You get there through the, you can't jump in from the bulkhead, obviously, but.
What do you mean by?
To get in, to get to the river, to do whatever you want to do, fishing.
You walk down the slope to the bulkhead and in the area where there's no bulkhead, you walk down the lawn.
So you would.
What's there right now as far as bulkhead and and upland grass is kind of what's setting going to be there in the future? I mean, we're enhancing it with plants and grasses and a walkway, but if you walked out here today, the structures that are in place are going to continue to be there. The the bulkhead ends at a certain point and there's grass that runs all the way to the end of the property where the, where the train tracks are. And that changes.
And if I could. I'm trying to understand how this whole public access thing works.
Conservation Commission and my negotiations with the town attorney and they really want to keep frankly, people away from the water. I don't know if it's for liability purposes, as I said before, except for viewing it. They want to have, that's why they have that no lot, no mowing uh language in there. We can't touch anything next to the water without their permission. They want it all natural.
Can you point out the bulkhead again there?
Yes, the bulkhead is this fence we're flying right along.
Does it go all the way to the post road on the south?
And it it stops just short. There's this thing stormwater discharge for D O P at the corner of the property there. That's unimpacted.
Is there a grassy area where somebody could walk down? Is there a safe area where we could walk down and access the river from down there? And then up at the top, how much space is there? Where where does the bulkhead end towards the?
The bulkhead continues to.
So it looks like it's about three quarters of the way, a semi circle towards the train tracks from the road. Or so, okay, and about. So beyond where the bulkhead ends, it just turns into regular grass. And that's all public access area. So you're saying that somebody could walk along because there's kind of a steep slope down to the bulkhead from where the sidewalk is going to be. Does that level off at the back?
It it's more leveled than the bulkhead, but it is still a relatively steep slope. And I'll defer that back to Attorney Willinger about the access to the water and, you know, kind of what Conservation is asking us for.
But so why wouldn't someone be able to take a kayak or something and put it in up there? You know, obviously you couldn't put it over the bulkhead, but like, why would that be not allowed, I guess?
There's a couple of practical reasons. Uh if you notice the bridge, the post road bridge
Yeah.
in high tide, uh there's not much headroom for boats. Uh and uh if somebody would go and let's say mid tide, they wouldn't be able to go back to the dock. Uh unless perhaps if they lay it on the kayaks, there's not much space. The other thing is the harbor management plan uh really precludes and sections of the plan, which I have here, I could reference later, really precludes various uh boats in there in in that uh section of the river because uh they, it goes down to the uh build tide, you know, the and uh
Tide mill.
And that's it. I mean, there's there's nowhere to go.
I do know, just through living, growing up on Mill River, in fact, I might have done it. People have taken boats, rowboats, kayaks, canoes from Samp Mortar Dam all the way down to Southport, all the way down to the tide mill, I believe. Maybe they don't do it anymore, but I know.
That's the end, that's it.
Okay, so it's not you that's preventing it. You're saying the town does not want people to have a kayak launch there? Because I know back in the day, because I was involved in the cleanup peripherally, okay? It was envisioned there would be kayak launches, things like that, people being able to access the river right there.
Conservation a- as of this time does not. Uh but as as I said, they put in that document that they reserve the right to that. Why? I don't know.
And also, can you point out, so it seems as though the easement is partially in the river, right?
That's right.
Can you point out uh the outline of the easement area, the point nine two or wherever point nine you were talking about?
Yeah, so the boundary is this first.
And that's the fence.
It's direct, the fence is set right at the boundary. It's six inches off, so that's why these lines are mostly overlapping. And the easement extends from there to this property line.
And that property line is in the river. It's way beyond the bulkhead and the water goes right up to the bulkhead.
Correct.
So it's not really land. It's, how much is the land portion?
I mean, I don't have a hard number for you off the top of my head. Um but, you know, it's this.
It's almost half. It's about, it's almost an acre of land. It's point nine two acres.
But it's, but it's not land if it's in the river though, right?
Well, no, but it's public access.
How much is under the river? How much of the easement is under?
Which I'm saying, if you estimate it's about point nine two, right? So if you look at the curved area there where all the improvements are.
About a half an acre of land.
Of all plain area.
And how much is it from? Because part of it is kind of that steep slope. How how much of is it on the flat area? I'm wondering.
I don't know.
I'm just trying to figure out how much.
I I don't know. Yeah, it's probably half of that. We'll get that number area.
I'd like to have some of those numbers because um I haven't done the research, but I don't know if you can give an easement to a tidal water body. You know, that's part of you know, I don't know that you can even legally do that. Is that going to be on the description?
It's a survey thing, right? You know, in, nobody owns below mean high water.
Right, so how?
Tie line. Well, it's a, you, properties all along the coast that own out into the water theoretically is a tie line. So they, from a surveying perspective, designate the land that may very well have been landed one time, long time ago. But I mean, in order to close a property line, you have to have a certain line out in the, in the water. Because nobody really owns below mean high water.
I understand. So basically, about a half of the point nine acres of the public access is part of Mill River and maybe about half of that is sort of the flat
Exactly.
area that people could, and that's going to have uh the sidewalk and plant things and whatnot. Where's the no mow zone then? Is that on the slanted part, the sloped part?
The no mow zone is between the walkway and the bulkhead.
And do you have a separate landscaping plan that has the native plant? Is that in the new revised one?
So this is a blown up of the area. The this has the callouts and then the.
Somebody made some suggestion of a different plant to promote the.
Yeah, we've been working with Conservation um and some members.
Pollinator trail, I guess. We had some comments.
Worked with Mary Hoag. I'm not, she's with the.
The Mill River uh Webline Committee.
And so this has our poll species list. This is our seed mix for the grass. And then, you know, I mean, we've worked heavily with Conservation. Some of the revisions were on tree species to choose more native plants. Yeah.
Have you studied the possibility of removing the bulkhead and having a natural shoreline? Because I talked to someone who said it wouldn't even take up that much um space to do. It wouldn't be that difficult to do. I don't know what the Conservation Director.
Talk all about that.
Oh, you were going to talk about it? Okay, I don't want to invade you. I'm done for now. Thanks. Thank you very much.
We're going down the line, but just a question for you, Attorney Willinger. Is this the gentleman you wanted to have speak with vacation issue?
No, Norm Bennett.
All right, so I'm going to go down the line. If we can ask questions, I would, I think it's nine o'clock. I think it might be wise to turn to him.
Who's going to do that?
So Commissioner leaving.
On the line, I just want to finish my presentation. Just.
One question. In terms of access right now, it's fairly limited. I mean, if somebody wants to stick their toe in the water, it would have to be from the north side and there's no real walkway or any sort of way to get down there presently contemplated. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, you can negotiate that slope, but it's it's a steep slope, right?
And later, if the town wants fishing and crabbing, they'll figure out some way to do it, I assume. Thank you.
Yeah, and this is a very exciting project and we're glad that Penske has great interest in our town and it'll be obviously a great boon for us. But um I had a question for uh for Detective, just a question on the enforcement of the kites and the drones. Could you just tell me who would enforce that?
The genesis of that?
No, no, the genesis, just who would enforce that, like?
Well, if they're drones uh flying, uh believe me, the Penske folks will uh call the town because we don't want any.
Penske will enforce it.
Basically, we don't want any drones crashing on these cars, that's for sure.
Okay, no, that makes sense.
Yeah, I guess it would be, I guess it would be the town. It's a good question. Yeah, a lot of times you put, you set these conditions forth and there's nobody there that jurisdiction.
Commissioner Seber?
Yeah, I just uh been looking at T A P T.
Speak up a little bit.
Oh, yeah, sure. Release the T A P T. Nonhazard management. Given the size of this development based on what stated here about the design. I'm just curious about your opinion about building this structure, how that might alleviate storm surge or neighbors in the area versus any other type of development, like residential development, if that makes sense.
Yes, yeah, it sure does. Um this is, that's, I was going to get into the, because what's in the coastal area management planning report thirty is what we have to identify the coastal resources and how we impact them. So there is the coastal, what you refer to as the coastal hazard zone is directly related to the hundred year flood elevation. Our site right now is up, it ranges from elevation twelve to sixteen. So we're out of the hundred year flood elevation. So we're not adding anything in there, but this is tidal. So, you know, just like if you stick another boat in Long Island Sound, it doesn't raise the water at all. Storm surge is a totally different thing from uh from FEMA requirements kind of thing. That's it. Like Sandy was a storm surge. Sandy wasn't a hundred year storm. It was the surges that occurred. And so we're up and outside of the coastal reef, of the coastal hazard zone, which is directly related to FEMA and the hundred year flood elevation. So we're outside all of that. We're not going to impact any neighbors. And we don't have a founda- we have a foundation. We don't have a basement here other if that's a concern. Some people are concerned sometimes you raising the groundwater, which is valid sometimes, but in this case, we just, we're slab on grade, no basement.
Is it, you would say that um your development wouldn't exacerbate the situation, it could potentially help?
Yeah, uh yes, would it, could it help? It's not going to, it's not going to impact in any greater than it does. We're we're maintaining status quo. The thing that I think does the greatest, I mean, you you can't look at what's out there right now. It's a big lawn, right? You got to remember what it used to be.
What it is.
And now, I know. You make a great football. But um, but we're taking the storm drains, right? And which typically went in, drained overland and went into Mill River with no restrictions, no, no mitigation at all. And we're sending it through this water quality. It's it's a, you know, it's a, it's kind of a new practice, probably within the last eight or ten years of it. Every, and years ago, what they asked you to do is fill up that parking lot with with infiltrators, right? And hold all the water, which in this case doesn't make sense because. Bottom of the watershed, right? And typically what they do, because a lot of these towns, their storm drainage is undersized. And so they ask you to hold the excess water and release it after the peak flows, right? So if somebody's an up topper into the watershed, their water comes down. We wanna have our water in Long Island Sound and gone by the time everybody else's comes down. So for, we're we're kind of nebulous. We we don't impact them beneficially or we don't impact them negatively from a storm drainage perspective. Except for the water quality.
Commissioner Corcella.
Um, are you going to speak to the stinky letter or someone going to?
Chuck mentioned he's gonna do it during we bottles, but we got a great letter.
We'll let him finish and then we can.
Yeah, just quickly, I just wanna do that, you know, we're here for coastal management site plan application. We just wanna hit some of the high points. Hazard zone, we're outside of that. We're, we're, you know, they they've got the certain coastal resources, right? Identified in the CAM report, so we, there's four, four, five of them here. There's, they're identified as a shellfish area. However, this particular area adjacent to our site is referred to as restricted. So there is no harvesting the shellfish from this particular area. And just the fact that there's water up against our property, it's referred to as coastal waters. And then there's just regular coastal resources that are along there. There's, there's the water themselves. And the associated area just above it. So I think in our CAM report, the final analysis there, and I think D E P concer, D E P concurs with this. If there's no uh negative impacts to the coastal resources from our proposed development.
Ask a few more questions, but I would like to get to the gentleman who's gonna have the information, cause I wanna get, make sure we have him fully done.
I'll wait until.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, so um, you you mentioned that there's a water treatment system. Essentially treats the water in the parking area. Can you explain how that would differ for a parking lot that. Brake dust, rubber. How was, how was that different from just a regular sediment filter?
It's, it it actually cleanses the water. It goes through this treatment. It's a, it's a referred, I think we have a detail on our plan actually. Hydrodynamic storm scepter is more than just a catch basin where there's something at the trap hood. It's, it's, what would I, best way to describe it, you know, it's a oil and group separator on steel. It's a, it's specialized. Specialized, we have an operations and maintenance program. I think I got submitted uh with the plan. And typically, um, you may impose it, or conservation certainly will, that we have to provide a contract to either conservation or planning zoning. With a firm that goes in and cleans it on a bi-yearly basis.
Thank you. And then um. The, the conservation area, uh, right now. Sounds like there's no activities such as boating, fishing, or swimming permitted there. Uh, which are requirements under twenty-two A ninety-two. And then.
Suggesting that we, and I think it was conservation.
Yeah, so the public access under twenty-two A ninety-two also requires beaches or docks. Beach or dock. Uh, so you don't meet that requirement either? And then.
Just saying, Commissioner, I mean, some of these things were restricted by conservation. They didn't want us to do that.
Right, but we're independent of conservation.
Yeah, no, I got you. I mean, that's where our, that's where our impetus was.
And then could you broadly explain, and these are the three, and it uses under C S G twenty-two A ninety-two. Your conservation and sustainability, it says recreational use should be compatible with the conservation of coastal resources. Explain how you fulfill that requirement?
I think in this particular instance, we we have no impact on the coastal resources, right?
But, but it says conservation of coastal resources. It doesn't say impact. It says you're actively contributing to the conservation of coastal.
I'm sorry. I think that's my interpretation. But I, I think just by virtue, we're introducing the native plants and vegetation all along the shoreline, which now runs unrestricted. Mill River is a, an enhancement to the water quality that reaches and and just the, you know, the water quality from our site. But most, but you're specifically saying in a public access way, there's a fairly robust landscaping plan that would be implemented.
It sounds like you revise that to include native species.
We had native species. There was a particular two or three species that Tim Bishop suggested that. And I think something came out of the, the group that oversees the pollinator trail. They suggested put some of the plants in there, and so we did.
And then um, uh, the bulkhead, uh, which is something I think concerns all of us. What what's the useful life of that metal?
So we actually had one of the preeminent. He owns Coastwise, excuse me, he owns Cove Marina, that one of the Gardellas who installs him. And he estimated this is a thirty to forty year lifespan on that metal um bulkhead.
And it's um old now?
Probably seven or eight years, we figured out.
Yeah, and so um, Post Road is responsible for the replacement of that.
Let me, let me speak to that, since I. What will happen is if it ever had to be replaced. And I assume sometime it will have to be perhaps. Uh, the jurisdiction and the sole jurisdiction is the D E P. And right now, uh, the D E P frankly has been favoring removal of the bulk. Removal the bulkhead. But they will be the people that Post Road is gonna go to and get a permit to do whatever they say.
I was concerned more about the financial obligation. So will they be bonding that obligation? What, I don't know. Penske, I know. But Post Road's a landowner. What, how do we, how are we assured that they've got the financial wherewithal?
Principles of the Post Road. L L C entity uh are one of the largest taxpayers.
It'll be in LLC.
It is an LLC.
So that, an LLC.
LLC that'll own this land.
It's an LLC.
Pretty valuable.
So the LLC that owns the land will hold obligation. So it could be subject to a lien.
In what regard?
If they fail to replace the.
Oh, absolutely.
And then um. So the, the um. I think you clarified the question on, it sounds like there's about quarter acre of flatland there. We'll get the right, we'll get the correct, you know, okay. Oh, so switching from the, from the conservation area to the site plan. Looks like you're adding three double lane access points. Is that correct? And then uh, there's two existing at martels, ones in the adjacent space or ones at martels. Is it necessary to have five access points on, I'll call it the north side, plan north or the plan south?
Necessary, it's probably more convenient to have it. And I'll tell you one, the, the westernmost driveway is actually only an exit out. Right, so there's one service entrance, which is limited to the amount of people that come for service. And then the one furthest to the east is really the active driveway. The interesting thing about this site also is, and you've probably all seen it, what are the trucks, what are the, the car carriers do when they come to a car dealership, right? They park on the road and unload all their vehicles and go into the car dealership. And this particular engine's been designed so that truck, particularly a car carrier can drive into the easterly. Uh, driveway and take a left behind the building, unload it and then come out on the westley drive and the only. Uh, right turn only coming out of there so that they can get back onto the highway.
And for the record, that's Plan TM one point zero. And uh, you could see the uh exit as far as Peter said, the far westerly. Is uh for the trucks to go out and it's right turn only, so you can't take. Really servicing the site is this one for the, mainly for the trucks. This is for the service center. For the uh customers.
You have a left hand turn to that westernmost site.
When you come out of the right turn, the idea is to be able to go down to the highway.
People going to the park have to go through the back behind the building to get there?
No, no, there's, let me, can I just explain?
I know, but he says it's a left hand only turn.
Yeah, so no, 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 for the truck coming out of Penske's completely fast off, right? And so the truck comes in on the easterly, goes through the back, drops off.
There is a left truck.
Yeah, 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 excuse me.
Right, it's not a right only, it's a.
I was saying, right only when you come out.
For the trucks.
Trucks only, and that access is only for trucks coming out. The vehicles are not gonna come out that way.
So they'll be making a left at that easternmost.
Could be, right, if they're heading east on the post road, there's a possibility that a vehicle truck could.
They'll all be coming from the highway.
Perhaps, or they could come from the highway from Bridgeport too, right? They don't just come from there, but.
Hope not, cause they'll become straight through town.
Yeah, well, we, we don't have any. State highway, so.
A big pile right now, so they're only gonna be coming from the west, right? Because if, we've got car carriers coming through Post Road, downtown Fairfield, that is, will not be obscene, so.
Well, our traffic expert's gonna point out that.
I, I didn't wanna get into traffic. Oh, I've got traffic questions too. This is site.
I'm talking about the bridge where our, our trucks are gonna be coming just from uh, from the west and uh, from the uh, west.
The west, yeah, they'll be making a left on the post road.
Correct.
So right now, we've got five entrances, I'd say on the southern part, two into martels, three in there. Uh, how many of those are aligned with the streets across the way?
They're offset from the streets.
And we went through that with D O T about this potential. We, we all said it sent it further to the east, so that we weren't teed up with. So, so you've got five offset streets, actually four offset streets. Light is kind of spooky, cause there's not a light. Uh, there's not a light regulating coming out of martels, which is always horrifying coming out of there, right? You guys go to martels? They feel like I'm taking my life, my hands come out of there. So, um. Not, I'm not exaggerating. It's, it's pretty scary. Um, so you got five offset. Yes, five offsets, three coming on the other side, so you've got eight points of access in this stretch right here. That sounds a little like Black Rock Turnpike to me, which is a disaster. I mean, is there any way to clean that up? I mean, you got eight separate points coming into this thing. Uh, it's, it's seven, cause you've got one Sasco goes straight across. That's, that Sasco martels is a mess. And it's not your mess, but it's your, kind of your mess, cause you're surrounded. Is there any way to clean that up?
I think we've been through the cleanup process with the D O, with the D O T and your local engineering people. I would say regardless of it being three access points, um, two of them are, actually, two of them are only, one's one way in. And the other is one way out.
Which way is one?
Service in the middle is one way in. And then the one to the east is two ways, in and out.
So you're gonna be making a left.
And the one to the west is one way out for truck, for truck traffic.
And, and this is really more, kind of a, we get a gray area between site plan and traffic. I didn't see reference to the. Post Road diet in any of the traffic studies.
Say it again?
Post Road diet. You're not familiar with that? That's the D O T re-shriving.
Okay, yeah, we, that's been incorporated. I mean, we, D O T's completely reviewed our plans.
I didn't see any of the plans or reference to it anywhere, but that was incorporated?
It was, we included their comments into our plans.
The T I A. Shows the old configuration, doesn't show the road diet. My reading of it, I'm not a traffic engineer, but. So, um, what, what is, do you know, is that something you could investigate?
Do is incorporate it onto our plan.
Are you, are you, do they sub to you, the traffic engineer?
Well, you'll see him. No, he's his own consultant.
So he's separate to these guys?
Yes, he's separate to our firm, Land Tech. But he's part of the.
They're not, they're not sub to you?
No, no, he works for the property of the um applicant.
So getting back to.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I do wanna get to this gentleman because it's nine fifteen and I, I wanna be able to get to him, so we're not having issues.
Okay, so.
Next month.
Oh, oh, can I ask last, next time?
Yeah, you're not done, you don't have to be done asking questions. Just write them down for. For him, sorry. And we can ask him again, but I'm gonna take this gentleman out of turn.
Perhaps the most critical issue that you folks are gonna have to decide in any application, including this one. Uh, is whether if you grant a particular proposal, how will it impact the existing neighborhood? Will there be any adverse impact? In that regard, we have, in my opinion, the most renowned from. Both Norm and his father, Norm Senior, have been doing uh real estate appraisals and, and real estate impact statements for years. They're excellent. You have uh your, their report. In the record now, I'd ask Norm if he would introduce himself and then. Outline your report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for taking me out of turn. Uh, my name is Norm Benedict. Um, I live in Guilford, Connecticut. My offices are in Hampden, Connecticut, where they've been for seventy years. Uh, since my father established company, who was ninety-seven, still working full time. Um, I'm a commercial real estate appraiser and consultant. I'm licensed in the state of Connecticut and most of the surrounding states. Um, I'm also designated through the Council of Real Estate, the Royal Institute of Chart Surveyors, the National Association of Realtors. And I'm an associate member of the Appraisal Institute. I work primarily in Connecticut and to less than the surrounding states. However, I've worked throughout the entirety of the United States. Parts of Canada and on occasion, the Virgin Islands. I was hired to do an impact analysis um on the property that we're discussing at twenty-one ninety Post Road in Fairfield. Initially relevant to which, I think it's beneficial to note that I did not come from outside this area. I am very familiar with this market. I've been appraising, doing counseling studies in Fairfield County for almost forty years. Been doing it in Fairfield itself for an equivalent period of time. In the last few years, I've appraised roughly twenty-one properties and done feasibility studies in Fairfield. Including working for the Fairfield Housing Authority, doing rent and reasonability studies. Um, and in fact, I'm actually working on Project Black Rock Turnpike right now. So I am very familiar with Fairfield. Um, I'm also familiar with these type of properties. I've been doing appraisals of dozens, if not possibly hundreds of uh new and used car dealerships over the decades. But also a variety of other automotive interrelated projects. Gasoline service stations, garages, transportation centers, recently electric car divisions. And even had the occasion to uh praise Connecticut's racetrack up at Lime Rock. So I'm also familiar with this type of property. Now, our analysis basically. Follow what is definable in the institute is a category C study, which basically is a two-fold analysis. Largely anecdotally, it initially addresses the immediate neighborhood of a property. Looking at the commercial components of that property and how it might be affected, as well as the residential components. Secondarily serves to try to find similarly oriented properties in what might be extended, the extended regional market. Looking at ones that had a similar development pattern and trying to determine, again, the commercial and the residential perspective, whether or not there is a direct effect on them. And doing so, we determined that the development of this facility would not have an impact on the community that it's in. Now, in looking to this area initially, I think it's beneficial, although I'm sure you all are more than well aware of what property is. Or where the neighborhood is, I think it's beneficial just to consider it again. We're dealing with an area that, you know, fifty, seventy-five years ago was strongly influenced by industry, but has evolved. Towards a more typical commercial corridor. However, it's still maintaining a lot of the older commercial aspects, a lot of older commercial buildings. It hasn't been subject to the same level of demand that has been seen on other corridors in Fairfield. Um, it's abutted to the south by a predominantly residentially oriented community. To the north, it's basically abutted by the Metro North Railway Lines to the opposite side of which is heavy industrial development. Um, this is a pattern that's well established and unlikely to change in the near foreseeable future. And basically, when you're dealing with an area that's this diverse, it's difficult for something such as this to come into the area. And have a definitively negative influence on the community. Now, initially, we looked to the commercial corridor itself. The corridor is basically predominantly retail and office oriented nature. However, it also has a variety of non-resident or non-commercial uses. There are, uh, excuse me, non-retail or office uses. There are commercial developments, there are gasoline service stations, there's a. There are, excuse me, non-retail or office uses, there are commercial developments, there are gasoline service stations, there's a service garage. All of which, again, reflects a very diverse market, however. What's most important, I think, is the fact that directly across the street from the property phrase is an auto service garage or car dealership. One which, while currently vacant, is under contract with CarMax and shortly will be very busy once again. And it will represent a dynamic influence in neighborhood far more than this project would. That fact in itself almost precludes the possibility that this project could have a detrimental impact since it already exists. And it's reasonable addition, I think, to look at that, that property. It isn't a new dealership that just moved into the area, or one within the last few years. Its history technically dates back sixty-five years, and as a car dealership, it has been in place for forty years. That point is relevant because since it was active for most of its operation, that means, in fact, most of the people who owned property along the corridor. Did so when they were being influenced by an existing car dealership. Furthermore, while acknowledging maybe a few people who have owned their homes for more than forty years, it's probable that the residential community to the rear of it. Also, when they bought their houses, they were being influenced by it as well. Again, this is making it difficult for this project to have a definitive impact on it. Final point from residential perspective is that. When we're looking at this neighborhood, it's not a purely residential community, while the area itself. South of Post Road is residentially oriented, it is next to a commercial corridor and is strongly influenced by one. This is a corridor that's been in place for a hundred, hundred fifty years, but it's been developed to the current capacity that it exists today, largely since the post World War Two period. It's not as if a beautiful residential neighborhood that suddenly had, let's say, an assisted living center put into the middle of it. And was subsequently influenced by that. It's already being subject to the influence, and as a result, it becomes difficult for another new influence to present a truly detrimental factor. Again, that being especially when one considers the fact that the, this project will be separated from the residential community. By a busy residence or a busy commercial roadway and an existing dealership. The reality is, because of all the existing influences, it's our opinion that it would be almost impossible for this new influence. To present a negative influence on the property, in fact, when one gives deference to.
Technology, I guess.
Still doing fair TV?
Or just something different?
Not tonight.
Yeah, there's a complex. Okay. We're not, we're not.
We're special, don't.
This is not live.
I'll be on the website. You remember when they started that? You're getting it? I know.
Fair TV broadcast. My wife is assistant, she's like.
Do you have a?
It's not gonna be over by nine.
I can hear.
All right, we're back.
That's a good excuse not to watch her.
My wife, she, she, she was like, she wasn't, she wasn't, she was incensed, she was like.
So we are still recording.
Oh, please.
We're back on, sorry, if you guys want me to. Recording everything we're saying right now.
This is, you might be causing.
On, I can see the screen.
We're back on the air, Mr. Chair.
What's that, all the screens aren't worked on?
I was on Board of Finance from two thousand and seventeen to twenty eleven. I'm sorry, twenty thirteen, six years, tell me about it.
All right, so we're, we're able to go on the record, but not use the.
I'm working on that, but we're recording, fair TV can see us, we're on the air.
Fair TV can see us, we're recording, we're on the air, but for whatever reason, we can't see the videos here. Yeah, okay, as long as we're on the record. Broadcasted, I guess.
Should I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I want to just correct for the record.
Oh, just.
Twenty-two sixty-nine property close to the street.
Yes.
Carvana.
Twenty, yes, twenty, the, I said.
CarMax.
Okay, twenty-two sixty-nine, but it's, I think, if you're familiar with the area, it's a large car dealership, which, it's been operated, I think. Previously, a bunch of, of not used car, but actual new car dealerships. The distribution bay and the repaired garage section. Being the way they used to design them in the back, meaning that all the cars are operating in the back right next to the residential neighborhood. And since they're not redesigning the building, that's going to be the way it is today. Which, again, given that fact, makes it very difficult for something across the street, the opposite side of it, to have any more impact than this is going to have. It's already there, much less when you consider the fact that a generation five Porsche dealership, the amount of volume that's going to be having in reality is going to be notably less. The bottom line, just as a summary, is, we're dealing with a commercial corridor that's been established as such for an extended period of time. This is a fact that in and of itself makes it difficult for new influences to have a detrimental impact on it. I grant you, if it was, let's say, the storage of propane gas, or it was a, you know, sewage reclamation plant, that would be negative. But I do not believe based upon the available data that this is going to have, in any capacity, definitive, it could have a negative impact on it. In fact, as an aside, we went back and we looked at the average price of homes. When, previous to when there was actually still an operational dealership across the street. And the data appeared to show that there really wasn't any difference between the homes that were located on, or right next to the dealership that existed, and the ones farther afield. And in discussing with some local realtors and brokers, their basic reason was because that's not really what people cared about. When they're buying a house, they want, you know, the nice backyard, they want the kitchen that looks nice, they want the bathrooms, they care if it's updated. They're going here because they want the certain school system, so.
Now I can see the display. Are we good?
This is rough.
Never had this issue.
All right.
This is not live, but it's being filmed through Zoom, are we doing Zoom now, or?
Yes.
Yes.
We're back on the record, so go ahead.
Okay, so, just finishing up with point one, the bottom line is that based upon all the, and what I've explained. Is I do not believe it would have a negative impact, much less, given the fact that if you look at the area right now. And compare it to other areas, I mean, there's dynamic growth occurring throughout Fairfield, I've been involved in a lot of the projects, I've done feasibility studies for other ones. This area has moved much slower than every other area, you can still find a lot of older buildings, you can still find vacant lots. I know that there's a tobacco shop that may be redeveloped, but until that actually happens, all this is just theoretical. This is a project, I think, with, what I've seen in other areas, beneficially impacted, so, reality may be, not only would it not represent a detriment. It could represent a benefit that could cause growth to start and begin in the area. Now, secondarily, we completed a comparative market analysis, and as I said, this involved looking to several other properties. And the problem that you run into to a degree, first of all, you're required under President's Student U S C A guidelines to do it this way. But the problem is, it theoretically, in a classroom teaches that. Here you have a perfect set of data here, you have a perfect set of data here, and you can compare these two perfect sets of data, and you can come up with perfect answers. And the reality is, you're never going to find two neighborhoods that are identical. So we attempt to come up with neighborhoods that are as similar as possible, and try to look at the data within them to see if we could find definitive answers. The first one we looked at was seven hundred Post Road East in Westport. This is where New Country Toyota recently developed a, a new facility. This is basically an existing commercial corridor, like this property, it's located along the Route One corridor, it's predominantly surrounded to both the north and south by single family residential development. We initially contacted several people and looked at, but the typical rental rates were for office and retail properties that were near the dealership. As well as farther afield up and down the street, we could not find any difference present. We did find some subtle differences with the office space, however, when we looked into the difference, we found that the properties that were higher down the road. Weren't because of proximity to the dealership, it was a function of the fact that they were medical office space and it rented for a higher rate. We also looked, there's a small apartment complex directly to the north of it, as well as two other apartment complexes to the side of it. We couldn't see any difference in the rental rate for those apartment complexes, nor any indication of the vacancy rate. And the capitalization rate, which is the best reflection in many ways of what an investor's perspective, is pretty much the same as well, to the south, it was residential, single family homes. And they were so diverse, it was almost impossible to compare apples and oranges, you really can't compare. You know, a, a single family ranch with a colonial, with an estate house, but what you can look at is time on the market, because if nobody wants this house because of the dealership. You're going to see a longer time in the market than you would of a property farther afield. Irrespective, as long as you have basically similar quality levels. But the reality is, we didn't see any differentiation in times on the market either. The bottom line was, with this first example, we couldn't find any difference present. The second one we looked at was the West Putnam Avenue Corridor in Greenwich. We looked at it in part because originally it has a Porsche dealership, which is not as good quality as this one is, it's a generation four, but it's similar. It also has Mercedes, Audi, Ferrari, has Bugatti dealership, has a Bugatti dealership. To the north of it, one has some limited residential development, then it goes into ridiculous estates, which are largely typical of that part of Greenwich. To the south, it has a mixture of mixed-use properties and, and office and commercial, and then goes farther into strictly residential properties. Mostly post World War One into post World War Two construction. We looked at the commercial market again, we could not find any differentiation for rental rates, this has a. Any of the offices or for the retail properties. We also discussed it with several of the people located in the market, went to various retail stores, various offices. To the degree they would talk to us at the offices, and no one indicated a problem. In fact, one gentleman who had a restaurant indicated that liked being next to the Bugatti dealership, because apparently his customers would do little selfies with. The really fancy sports cars in the background, but aside from that, they didn't have any real issues. And looking to the apartments that were located to the south, several of them had recently been transferred. And so you could look at what the capitalization rates were with those, and we were involved in a capitalization rate study for the entirety of the. Town of Greenwich for a whole different reason, so we had a good basis of understanding of what they are. And we couldn't find difference in the capitalization rates contiguous to this, nor, as it was farther afield, basically indicating that from an investor's perspective. They didn't see any real difference. We also looked at the rental rates that were being charged in the apartments, and there was no real difference here either. The bottom line was that in this second example, we couldn't find any evidence that the presence of the car dealership was having an impact. On either the commercial or the residential community. The next property we looked at was fourteen hundred Post Road Corridor in Darien. This is where H L Chevrolet just expanded and created Land Rover of Darien. This area is basically a commercial to its northwest side, because it goes right into where the highway is. And to the south, it's all residential of a largely homogeneous nature. Again, we did the same basic study that we had previously, we looked at the rental rates for properties, we couldn't see any difference, again, in rental rates from one point to another. We did notice a, a higher grading of rental rates as one went closer to the downtown section of Darien. However, that was attributed more to being downtown Darien than it was being away from the, the car dealership, simply stated, because. As you get farther down the street, it, it's a more desirable area, it's, it's surrounded by more things, per se. We also, again, looked at the office space, and we couldn't find any evidence for there either, we didn't see. Differentiations in the rental rates, we couldn't see differentiation in vacancy rates, the capitalization rates were pretty much the same. And when we looked at sales that occurred, there was no real differentiation in what had been achieved versus what somebody had asked for and the time on the markets. Basically, they just didn't care, the reality was that it had always been a commercial corridor, and like this property, it already had an existing. Car dealership, that being the H L Chevrolet, so the addition of a new one didn't really make a difference to the existing market. So basically, it did not have an impact on that either. Next one we looked at was three hundred Westport Avenue. This is an area that's basically a combination of single, single family residential development to the south of it, and mostly. Single family residential to the northeast and east, with multifamily residential to the west. We did the same study once again whereby we looked at typical rental rates, we could not see any definitive difference in those. We also looked at offices, which were far less present, and couldn't see any difference in, in those either. Relevant to the residential, it was more difficult to evaluate this market, because we were dealing with the context where all these properties were highly varied. So we went back to the same idea of how long did it take for these properties to market? Were they detrimentally served, and did people not want this property as much, and did it take longer to market that property? And commensurately, were, based on their asking prices, what percent of their asking price were they able to achieve? In order to try to identify, is there some kind of perceived detriment? The only way to really look at it, when you can't have, compare apples to oranges, you can still see the rest of it. And, and doing that, we couldn't find any evidence of an issue being present. Where we had an advantage was, there's an apartment complex that curves around, and it's a very large complex, has several that are right next to it and several that are above it. So we went into the management complex and asked them about it, do you have a problem with renting these apartments closer to the dealership versus the other way? Do you have to rent them for different rates? He indicated that didn't, that they had a waiting list, that there was no problem, I said, well, have you ever had a problem? And his point of view is, it doesn't bother us at all, nobody really cares, it's just a function of people wanting to be in this market. At the end of the day, the people are more concerned with the quality of the apartment and the amenities that it offered, than whether or not it was in proximity to. The, the car dealerships. The fifth and, and final one, and I'm sure you're probably happy that I'm done. And final one is the Milford Avenue, or the Milford Corridor, the six hundred to eight hundred Bridgeport Avenue in Milford. Where you have virtually every type of dealership you can imagine, Chevrolet, Ford, Nissan, Honda, Kia, they've been there for years. The area is hugely commercially oriented corridor, but it has a very strong influence of, of car development along it. The areas to the north of it is totally undeveloped, largely because it's swampland, or it goes into the railroad tracks, which in many ways, with railroad tracks, is similar to this property. To the south, it's going to the Devon section of Milford, it's entirely residential. And it's mostly areas that began development in the post World War Two, or post World War One, post World War Two period. But it was in the post World War Two period that you saw a lot of the Devon area develop, and if you look at it. It appears as if somebody, like, maybe the developers had three or four building plans, and they were just going to build the same house, they were just going to paint them differently. Because while over time they've evolved differently, they all look very similar, and that led itself to being able to be evaluated. So when we looked initially at the commercial corridor, we couldn't find any evidence of substantive differences, again, in retail rates. We couldn't find any evidence of differences in what the properties were charging, we also couldn't find any evidence of vacancy problems or capitalization. We found subtle advantages that seemed to exist with the restaurants that were there, as well as some retail properties, and when we asked them why. They said that the car dealership was almost like a destination location, possibly the way that shopping centers used to be. And the people would go to this area because they could go see a whole bunch of different dealerships. And they could try what car they wanted, and then afterwards, maybe they went to dinner, or maybe they would stop, you know, to celebrate they just bought a new car. Or for whatever reason, but they said they got a great deal of business from that. Looking to the residential neighborhood, we saw the same pattern, we didn't see any differentiation that came from being within proximity of the. Project, or the, the car dealerships themselves. Basically, the prices were almost uniform as one went south, almost for about three quarters of a mile, then it started to shift, but that was more so because. As you go into southern Devon, you get into the Chesterfield section, which goes near the waterfront, and all of a sudden has all these private residential communities, which. Have access to waterfront, their own private beach and all that, and all of a sudden, the whole influence changed. have access to waterfront, their own private beach and all that, and all of a sudden, the whole influence changed. But at the end of the day, there was no influence here. The bottom line, looking at all five of them, was we saw very similar patterns present. Most of the areas being commercial corridors already were subject to commercially-related influences. A lot of these areas, like this property, already had a car dealership in them. Subsequently, as a result, they were already historically influenced by it, a fact that made the new dealerships that were developed difficult to have an impact on. Residents, relative to the residential communities, you saw a similar pattern present. It wasn't just the car dealerships themselves that was creating an influence. It was basically the corridor itself, being located along commercial artery. But at the end of the day, when it came down to the residential properties, the one thing that universally we heard from every broken realtor we talked to, and it's something I think probably everybody recognizes, is the inherent value of a home is a very ephemeral thing to guess. When you look at a house, the reason you love this house might be because it had an open floor pan. I love that fireplace. Look at that kitchen, it's got brand-new appliances, they just updated the roof. I won't have to replace the heating system. These are the points that mattered, not necessarily what was next door. And I say not necessarily next door, because there's always the caveat that were what was next door, a munitions plant, or a sewage treatment plant, or, you know, a recycling facility, something horrendously noisy, or smelly, or horrible. Yeah, that's gonna have an impact. And most likely, it wouldn't have been allowed for development anyways. But in these cases, you're dealing with, you know, a class A-plus, high, extreme-high-end automobile facility, which is the cutting edge of which there's only one in the state of Connecticut. And if you go online and look at it, it's absolutely gorgeous. It's not going to have, it did not, it did not have impacts in these markets, and it's my opinion, it would not have an impact on this market either. Especially, again, when you take into account that there's already such diverse development present. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. That was very interesting. I really appreciate your insights. I don't know if you asked this question during your survey, the targets, but did you see any, you know, luxury car brands is significant, you know, asset to, were there any, what kind of benefits did you see when you interviewed different brokers, realtors?
I, as a general rule,
Did they say anything?
The highest in one, I suppose, was, I mean, the highest was Greenwich.
Yeah.
I mean, when you're dealing with Bugatti selling half-million-dollar cars, Bugatti selling three-million-dollar cars, or, you know, some of the others, and then there was one that was actually selling, you know, Formula One knockoffs. I don't know if it had a positive impact, but the facility that they had was of a quality level, because if you're gonna buy a three-hundred-thousand-dollar car, you're not buying it from, you know, Joe's Carter dealership down the street. You want to go in and you want to have the experience, because it's not just the car, it's everything. And so these facilities were gorgeous. I don't know if you've seen some of them in any garage, you can go online and look at them, but they're just ridiculous.
We've only got in the market for one of those.
I should be so lucky. But the bottom line is, they probably did have a positive impact, but it's difficult to evaluate, because truth be told, while I'd love to say, oh yeah, they were, they were great. I couldn't find that there was any from talking to people. I couldn't find any definitive evidence that it was either positive or negative. To a degree, people really didn't care. Again, they would probably care if all of a sudden, and I've seen this in some areas like New Haven and Bridgeport, where I've worked, in Hartford, where it used to be the nicest new car dealership in the nineteen seventies and eighties, and now that dealership has moved to the outside of town, and they've, and a new, a used car dealership has moved in, and people are like, yeah. You know, that's not what I was hoping for. So, I mean, in that case, I can see where it's a detrimental impact. But in the general rule, when you're dealing with a high-rent, it's always more beneficial.
Of course.
So, generally speaking, you've mentioned this is sort of, there aren't a lot of direct things to compare this to, but generally speaking, when you're trying to measure the impact of certain types of properties on adjacent property value, are there models you can use to estimate the impact, you know, a commercial property of a certain type?
Are you saying like exact set models?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, is there, like, is there a multiplier?
I mean, truth be told, I've taken like all the high-end classes with the appraisal institute, and I'm not sure if all, but appraisal institute is. They're like the highest edge you can get in the appraisal for teaching. And the five hundred level classes is basically, basically the best you can get. I've taken specific classes in marketing and analysis. They have wonderful models that you can go through and look at things, and it's great and beautiful. Only problem is, it was made by really smart people in class with wonderful data sets where, I don't know, you know, where they live, where, like, all the apartments are the same, everything is identical, and this moved in. So all you have to do is measure this against this, and you know, you take your class and you fill in your numbers, and hey, you got a great answer. It doesn't take into account the reality that the reason that this apartment may be renting for higher than this apartment is because maybe they just remodeled all these apartments, they all have stainless steel appliances. That's part of why you have to verify all your data, because if you just look at it online, you wouldn't know this. But it's an important consideration. That's why, at the end of the day, if you look at capitalization rates for a lot of these things, it provides you a better insight, because it's really giving you an investor's perspective, because it's saying, when all other factors are held equal, what do I think is the profit level to be inherent in this property? And if it's a really, you know, if it's really valuable, it's gonna have a low capitalization rate. If it has like a ten capitalization rate, you know, you know, it's probably, there's some issues present. And there really was no, per se, capitalization rate. But I'm sorry, short answer to your question, there are models, but there are none that perfectly apply in this scenario.
How specific do those models get? Commissioner Randolph sort of pointed out on the side, is there, is there the equivalent? Are they the equivalent of the IT that we keep talking about?
Oh, God, no.
So, you know,
I wish.
Is it a sort of accepted industry standard that is frequent, commonly used?
The unfortunate reality is, there is no industry standard, per se. I hate to say that as a matter of experience, but anybody who's dealt with commercial real estate appraising knows that it is, to a degree, an art form. That's why you take as many classes as you possibly can. You know, you get as much experience as you possibly can, and you appraise and do as many studies as you possibly can, because somewhere along the line, you develop the knowledge of what you need to do the job honestly. But the reality is, no, there isn't specifically published information for this metrics alone. I mean, if you were asking me, were, you know, what's the impact of building a new condominium complex at, you know, point A, and how's it gonna impact on these properties? I can measure, you know, demand centers. Can people afford this amount of property? What's the price that's gonna be necessary to afford that rental rate? At that rental rate, how many people are in that quotient? Is that number of people growing at a certain pace, based upon the growth in that certain pace? Then by extension, what portion of that could be allocated to this, and what impact, and is it feasible? But this is far more complicated.
Thank you. Commissioner Broad?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so, um, I think it's gonna be a startling sort of difference in the design element. I understand what Attorney Willinger said, but still hopeful there might be wiggle room. The whole stretch of the post road, when you drive down, it's all mostly office space or eclectic, small establishments. But anything you see is sort of white flowered or brick with white trim along really most of the downtown area. It sounds like it's gonna be extremely modern aluminum. I don't know, is it gonna be bright and reflective?
I apologize, I can't speak.
Does that make a difference in your analysis of like?
I don't think it tremendously would. I can't speak to aesthetics.
Okay.
But.
It's in the eye of the beholder, I understand, but, but fitting in with.
Not only that, but quite frankly, I don't, that's not what I was hired to evaluate, so I don't really know. But in terms of your question.
Fitting in with the rest of the sort of colonial-looking decor of Southport, it's basically Southport, edge of Southport. And the other thing is, we're updating our ten-year plan now, and I, I don't know, does it matter in terms of your valuation if we start doing dealers on that end of town, or we have it on the other end of town, a lot of carnage? Does it matter? Are we going, is it helpful or not helpful if we have two or three dealers on the Southport side of town? Does that change your analysis at all? I mean, this might be a startling difference from everything else around it.
Not really, per se. I mean, the reality is, I understand what you're saying about the aesthetics of the aluminum clad design, but it's more than that. I mean, when you look at it, it's really quite impressive. And I grant you, it would not look exactly like every other building. But then I would also say the office building that looks next, the medical office building next to it, which while it may be white, that doesn't look exactly typical either. So a lot of times, there are unusual buildings. If white is the standard, I don't know what to say. If you're talking about conformity, I mean, look, the nature of development within several blocks is, you're right, there is a strong colonial accent. I love that about Fairfield.
Yeah.
But I don't think that from the perspective of the impact on value, that it, which is the question I was asked to address, that it would have an impact on value. Absolutely don't.
Just to hammer the point, though. The building as designed now, at least in the renderings, at least that we saw, versus a building that was more colonial, even let's say, let's keep it white clavber or whatever, just one that's more conform and conformity to the post-road area than it is, where it is. In your professional opinion, how that different in aesthetics would not affect the property values or your, or your conclusions?
I don't believe so, because at the end, I don't think it's, at the core, the aesthetic, per se, as much as it is the function, which has to be evaluated. If I had a white sewage treatment plant, that would be, you know, that was a colonial building, that would be offensive.
But in your professional opinion, though, an aesthetic like that, or even just in general aesthetics, for commercial aesthetics, you don't find that that has a material impact on the property values of neighboring residential areas?
Again, it depends on the residential area. In this case, I would say no.
That's fine. Thank you.
So, just.
Commissioner Randolph.
Really, I've got a lot, a lot of questions, I'm not gonna finish them in six minutes, but I'll add a question related to this, so.
Well, let me ask you this, is it questions geared to him?
It's geared to him.
Go ahead, ask the questions.
This is a question specific to, a follow-up to what you just said. So, what's the height of most of the buildings around there, the residential buildings? Thirty-five feet?
I believe so.
And how tall is this building?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
We'll be sure.
What's, what's the massing of this building? Lot coverage and scale of this building, how does it compare to the other buildings, will it be larger, smaller?
When you say the other buildings, you mean in my study?
No, the other buildings in the.
In the neighborhood.
Contiguous.
That is, that is not something that I addressed.
I'm just, I'm just asking, the scale of this is similar or dissimilar from the surrounding buildings?
I would be of the opinion that all the buildings seem to be dissimilar from one another. I mean, if you look at the office building right up the street, literally next to it, that thing's huge.
So, you, your point is that the, this building is the same scale as the residential neighborhood? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay, because those, that's what I'm asking, because the residential neighborhood is adjoining to the site, it's one block away.
Right, but it's also separated by virtue of an existing car dealership that will be more active.
The car dealership is further, further.
Right across the street.
Okay. There are small houses that are of a similar scale in my observation. So, dissimilar buildings of a different use would not negatively impact the value? Is that what you're saying?
I'm trying to say, you said not negatively.
Would, would, would they?
Would they? I'm sorry, because it's double negative.
So, so they would have no impact on the value, is that what you're saying? A building of a different scale, a different size, a different lot coverage?
I honestly do not, I honestly do not believe it would.
Okay.
Because something is going to be built there eventually, that is part of the thing. Irrespective of what it is, the reality is, it'll probably.
Something, I guess I'm, I'm asking whether the something that's being proposed
I don't think it would happen.
Similar or dissimilar enough to impact the values?
I do not believe so.
So you feel, you feel like it's contextual, is that's, that's the architect's terms. This building is contextual to Southport, that's your opinion?
Like my Southport, are we at that point?
Yeah, we're adjacent.
That's the entry point.
But do you understand the term contextual?
Yes.
Well, because it's a, it's a.
No, I was just thinking about the, I was thinking about the answer to your question. I mean, nothing is one hundred percent perfect, so.
Contextual is like similar, of a similar scale, a similar nature.
Well, no, it's not, it's not the same.
So I'm saying, I think in twenty-seven four, it says, "The location type, character, and size of the use of the building shall be in harmony, in form with appropriate and orderly development of the town neighborhood." So, you're saying that this building is, has a similar type, character, and size of the buildings in the neighborhood?
Obviously not.
Okay, I'm just asking, because that's.
Beyond that, I don't think that's gonna have an impact on value.
Okay, so, a building that it doesn't have the same type, character, and size will not have a negative impact on value, that's your, your point?
Not necessarily, no. I can show you examples all over the state of Connecticut where people built new buildings that look totally out of context, and yet notwithstanding, they greatly benefited the community there.
Sure you could. M A I, I know what that stands for. Inside joke.
Yes, I get what you're saying.
Um, I've got a lot of questions. So, when are you gonna be back?
That was the whole point, is trying to get.
But I got two minutes.
That's away.
Four minutes, according to my.
Okay. All right, so, um, you're saying that written report, very helpful, and it's on our page one fifty-five, your page two, it says, "This site offers a beneficial location to exceptionally desired community in Fairfield." Um, proposed dealership, there's a ninety-eight unit high-end housing development that was proposed for the site. Right, I think that's in your report.
Yeah.
Um, what's the highest and best use of the site?
Hmm. If you're talking about it from a generic perspective?
Investor, highest and best use.
Well, nowadays, it's residential developments, apartments.
And, and what's the cap rate roughly for this property? I, I know, it'll probably be some kind of credit lease.
I, I don't know, I haven't been given information with the leases, so I don't.
No cap rate comps, right?
Right, but this is a land lease, so I haven't. I, I apologize, but I'm not allowed to guess.
Okay.
Because if, in, in order to guess, under Ucap regulations, I have to have proof, and then I have to create a file, and then.
Understood.
Just a law.
And so, so Penske's credit rating is high. So.
Yes.
The cap rate's gonna be low.
I would assume.
Okay, so, we're, we're at fifty-nine thousand square feet, forty-nine thousand square feet. What's the replacement cost for this building?
No idea.
So.
Again, that was, that's not one of the questions.
You weren't asked to come up with the replacement cost.
I know, but I assumed that somebody knows what the cost of it is, which, I mean, the cost new is, well, technically.
Just keep going, we don't know, that's fine.
If you don't know, that's fine, so I'm just trying to get to what the taxes are gonna be on this property.
Okay.
I'll address that.
Yeah, I don't think that's for.
Yeah, I was just trying to get to the.
I apologize.
Value of the property, so we can get the.
Understood.
Um, so, sorry, I asked about the scale. It says on page eight, you say incorporated with the proposed site is, is incorporated into the proposed site plan, I do not have to use the word plan, but is the location a desirable Martell's Restaurant? If this is incorporated in the plan right now, how is this incorporated? And if it were incorporated, how would it not be like? How did you come to that opinion that it was, the Martell's plan was incorporated into the site plan of this building?
I believe what I was saying is that the property itself is physically within the circle that surrounds it. Inartfully worded, but.
Okay. It's contiguous, but it's not necessarily.
No, no, but I apologize, it's just inartfully worded.
Um, let's see here. So you're saying that these, the adjacent roads, Fairfield Place, Overhill, Lindbergh, Fusco Hill Road, Tidymill Terrace, Northfield, Southfield, others are smaller mid-sized homes, ranging from average to exceptional quality. They're unlikely to be negatively impacted by the proposed car dealership. I think you've explained that already. Good. Um, and then there's, so, you say, right now, one of the logic streams you have in here is that there's our dealer that's across the street, that's been at least four or five different owners. Affinity dealer, it's probably been four owners, so it hasn't really been a pathway of success. Um, and it says that the Carvander car dealership, this fact would make it virtually impossible for anyone to assert, given the long-term sixty-five-year presence of car dealership, that another facility would not represent a negative influence.[1749.34] Okay, so I guess the presence of one negative would equal the same as a presence of presence of multiple negatives?
Well, I think it's in, inarguable that if you already have, if this was to be the first car dealership in the neighborhood, one could argue what the profound nature of the influence was on the residential community.
Was also many other uses, including the Republican.
Oh, I understand that, but it was a car dealership and it will be a car dealership again. And it is between this property and the residential community. So irrespective of this project, they will be influenced by a high volume, high density, high use our dealership operation. That's just a fact.
So I'm sorry, just so you think it's going to be high volume, high density, high use over Carvana?
If you look at other facilities that they operate, they tend to be yes.
That's in the traffic study, it said something else. So there was no.
By appointment only.
So portions.
Sign up online and they either deliver.
I guess you're saying that multiple negatives, multiple perceived negatives are the same as because you've got one slaughterhouse. And slaughterhouses are okay. That's your logic?
No, but maybe two would be.
Two, two, two slaughterhouses are okay. We don't have slaughterhouses where we get like.
No, but I mean, if there's already a negative influence present, it's difficult, especially when to a degree that negative influences between this property and the other property for it to present and this is what showed up in my study, especially when you looked at the property in Westport and when you looked at, at the one, I mean, it's in Darien. The new building, which basically was the second one in the neighborhood, didn't produce any profoundly negative influence.
I mean, the problem is we were trying to get through this gentleman because I don't think he's available next time and.
When are you coming back?
October sixth. Third and fifth anniversary. I can't avoid if my wife would kill me.
I mean, all right, I guess the thought is we'll see how next hearing goes. I thought would be, I hope to close next hearing. If there are additional questions that you have, anybody has with this gentleman, maybe then I guess the thought would be write them down, submit them in the record to be submitted to counsel and answered that way. We'll have to do it that way. But I guess that's going to be dependent about how things go next year. Go through that, Attorney Willinger, is that fair?
It is. Thank you.
Those would be submitted in the public record, right?
They have to be, but we'll worry about that. I was getting sorry, I didn't get to you.
No worries.
So I will adjourn the hearing, this hearing, during the meeting, this hearing remain open. The applicant's presentation.
Continue, wouldn't they?
Can you, two weeks from now? Is that, yeah.